For the record, it is Tuesday, January 21st at 6:00 PM. We'll start tonight's meeting with roll call attendance. Mr. Quirk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton?
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilwoman Strater?
Here.
Councilman Hoagland?
Here.
Councilman Burton?
Here.
Mayor Simison?
Here.
And absent is Councilwoman Peril.
Item two is pleasure of the allegiance.
... to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is adoption, or item three, adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion of second to the opt the agenda is published. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name. You guys have it. Item four, announcements. Any announcements for any members of council? Okay. We'll go into item five. Mr. Quirk, anybody signing up under future meeting topics?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is loading, I apologize. There are no signups.
Okay. We'll go into item number six. Action items, item 6A. And I'll turn this over to Sonya to talk about the modified final plat for Creason Creek Number Two, H-2019-0139 et al.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The first item before you tonight is a request for a final plat modification. This site is located on the east side of North Linder Road, just south of West Eustick Road. The final plat for this project was approved in 2018. The applicant is proposing to expand the subdivision boundary of Phase Two to include additional land area planned for development in Phase Three, as shown on the approved but not yet recorded final plat, and that's the one on the left there, and the proposed modified final plat on the right. The common area where a dog park was previously planned on Lot One, Block One, Creason Creek Subdivision Number One, and that is the area at the lower right-hand side there, is proposed to be relocated to Lot 13 and portions of Lots 14 and 15, Block One, and that is this area right here, as shown on the preliminary plat. These lots were previously planned as buildable lots. The applicant plans to re-subdivide Lot One, Block One, in the first phase of Creason Creek Subdivision, in the future, into two buildable lots accessible via Northwest 13th Avenue. The common area of Lot One, Block One, Creason Creek Subdivision, consists of 16,183 square feet. The proposed common area consists of 16,268 square feet, for an increase from that originally proposed. The proposed common area will have access via a pedestrian bridge over the Creason Lateral, from a pathway on the north side of the lateral, and that is shown right here, if you can see my cursor there on the map on the right. Again, from the pathway on the north side of the lateral, and will be fenced with a six-foot-tall wrought iron fence. Landscaping is proposed within the common area in accord with UDC standards. The applicant feels the proposed change will provide better access and use of the area. Written testimony has been received from Bob Unger, the applicant's representative, and he is in agreement with the staff report. The staff recommendation is for approval for the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions.
Are there any questions? If not, this is not a public hearing. Do I have any motion?
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, this item actually is a public hearing. The final plats after this are not, just for clarification. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Then I stand corrected. Is the applicant here? Are there any questions for staff first, I guess? If not, the applicant come forward.
Mr. Mayor and council, my name is Bob Unger. I'm with ULC Management, and I represent CS2 LLC, who is the developer of the property. We reviewed the staff report and the conditions of approval, and we are in agreeance with those, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
No questions. No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Cavanagh, did you have a question?
Mr. Mayor, thanks. Just a question for Legal or Sonya. Indicated this is a public hearing, but wasn't noticed on our agenda as such, so I'm just making sure that we don't have any issues that we need to cure, because at least the agenda that I have before me does not have item A listed as a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, or is it council, Councilman Cavanagh? I don't show it as a public hearing either, so I don't know why it wasn't noticed on the agenda that way. I don't recall other modified final plats being noticed as public hearings, so that's what I guess is new.
Perhaps I misspoke. Maybe it's a public meeting rather than public hearing.
Yeah, the applicant has the ability to weigh in, so it's public in that regard.
Okay.
But not a public hearing for the rest of the public.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, my bad.
We're all good, we're all learning. With that, since there is no public testimony that's available, are there any questions or is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton?
I move that we approve item 6A, H-2019-0139.
I have a motion of second to approve item 6A. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, do this by roll call or voice. If not, court will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton?
Aye.
Cavanagh?
Aye.
Strater?
Aye.
Hoagland?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Item 6B. And I'll turn this over to its final plat for Oaks North Subdivision, H-2019-0136. This over for staff comments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the next three items are all final plat applications, and we have received responses from the applicants on all three final plats in agreement with the staff reports. Typically, those would go on the consent agenda if we received them prior to today last week, but we did receive them late as the staff reports went out late. Would you prefer to go ahead and act on those, or would you like me to run through each of the applications for you?
Act.
Yep. Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burton?
Would it be appropriate just to lump all of these action items into one separately, but like together? Same?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, yes, you could do that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burton?
I move that we approve 6B, H-2019-0136. Item 6C, H-2019-0141. And D, 6D, H-2019-0132.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, let's quick call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton?
Aye.
Cavanagh?
Aye.
Strater?
Aye.
Hoagland?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
All ayes. Item 6E is a public hearing for box storage, H-2019-0121. I'll turn this over for staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next applications before you are a request for annexation and zoning and a conditional use permit. This site consists of a total of 1.92 acres of land between two parcels. The northern parcel is zone CC, and the southern parcel is zone RUT in Ada County. The site is located on the east side of North Eagle Road, just north of East River Valley Street, at 2480 and 2500 North Eagle Road. The CC zoned property was annexed in 2008 with the multifamily development to the east regency at River Valley, and a development agreement was required as a provision of annexation. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this site is mixed-use regional. The applicant is requesting annexation and zoning of one acre of land with the CC zoning district, consistent with the mixed-use regional future land use map designation, and a conditional use permit for a self-service storage facility on 1.92 acres of land in the CC zoning district. A site plan was submitted, as shown, that demonstrates how the site is proposed to develop with a self-service storage facility, consisting of approximately 600 climate-controlled storage units in a three-story, 100,000-square-foot structure, and 25 traditional storage units in two separate single-story structures, containing a total of 8,400 square feet to the north and south of the climate-controlled building. A revised site and landscape plan was submitted that reflects removal of a pedestrian connection between the residential development to the east and this property. So, again, this is the original plan right here that shows the pedestrian connection. This is the revised plan that excludes that. Access is proposed via a north-south baggage road along the east boundary of the site, and that is this road that you see right here. And that is for access via East River Valley Street, a collector street to the south. A cross-access easement is required to be provided to the properties to the north and south for access via the baggage road to River Valley. I'll just go back for a second here and show you the overview here. This is River Valley Street right here, and then the baggage road goes up to the backside of these properties right here. A temporary access via Eagle Road and State Highway 55 exists on the Great Wall property directly to the north of this site that is required to be removed once access is available via River Valley Street, which will occur with development of this site. A secondary emergency access is required with the proposed development per the specific use standards for the use. None is proposed, except for that on the Great Wall property that is required to be removed. Because this property is a mixed-use designated area and located adjacent to a major transportation corridor, State Highway 55, and arterial intersections, interconnectivity between uses and integration of uses is paramount. Therefore, the commission recommends the applicant continue to work with the property owners to the east on a cross-access easement and driveway for interconnectivity between uses, which would also serve as an emergency access for the storage facility via North Records Avenue, and provide a direct route to the commercial uses from the adjacent residential development without having to go around via the collector street, River Valley. The subject property and the property to the east are partially under the same ownership. If a driveway connection is provided on the property to the east, it would necessitate removal of three parking spaces and extension of a driveway across the existing buffer. At some point in the future, access may be available via the baggage road from the north once the property north of the Great Wall restaurant redevelops and a bridge is constructed over the Finch Lateral, but at this time, no other access exists. A 35-foot-wide landscape street buffer is required along Eagle Road, State Highway 55, with a 10-foot-wide multi-use pathway and pedestrian lighting. A 25-foot-wide landscape street buffer is required, excuse me, not street buffer, just landscape buffer, is required along the east boundary of the site as a buffer to the existing residential development. The applicant is requesting council approval of a reduced buffer width to 10 feet as there is an existing 15-foot-wide buffer along this boundary on the residential property, which combined with a 10-foot buffer will total 25, as required. A west-side conceptual building perspective was submitted, as shown with this application, which depicts building materials consisting of two different colors of EPHUS with an accent color on the cornices, glazing and metal canopies over the windows on the single-story structures. Final design is required to comply with the design standards in the Architectural Standards Manual. The commission recommended approval of this application to the city council. Let's go over a summary of the public hearing. Nick Mason, the applicant's representative, testified in favor. No one testified in opposition or commented on the application. Written testimony was received from Nick Mason, the applicant's representative, and he was not in agreement with staff's recommendation for a vehicular and pedestrian access between the adjacent residential development and the subject property. There was no issues of testimony, public testimony. The key issues of discussion by the commission were as follows. The provision of vehicular and pedestrian connectivity to the adjacent multifamily residential development to the east. Secondary emergency access to the site if the existing temporary access on the Great Wall property via Eagle Road is removed, as required. Reference to the existing temporary access approved through the variance for the Great Wall property to remain for better business access and for emergency access, as required for the storage facility, until such time as the baggage road is extended to the north of Great Wall, since the applicant doesn't feel a cross-access easement and driveway from the multifamily development to the east is feasible. Encouragement to the applicant to continue to work with the owners of the multifamily development to the east on a cross-access easement and driveway connection between the properties, possibly a gated access only accessible by residents to restrict cut-through traffic. And finally, concern pertaining to the impact the proposed three-story storage facility will have on the residents' view in the adjacent four-story apartments, and desire for staff to do a very thorough designer view on the structure for architectural appeal and compatibility with the adjacent residential development. The commission made the following changes to the staff recommendation. The commission offers their support to city council of the applicant's request for a reduced buffer width to residential uses from 25 feet to 10 feet along the east boundary of the site. The commission recommended the inclusion of a requirement for strict designer view of all four sides of the proposed structures to ensure compatibility and appearance with the adjacent apartment complex to the east. The commission changed staff's recommendation requiring a condition for the construction of a vehicular and pedestrian connection to the residential development to the east for interconnectivity to a recommendation for the applicant to continue to work with the property owners to the east on a cross-access easement and driveway for interconnectivity between uses. And finally, the commission recommends the existing temporary access via Eagle Road on the adjacent Great Wall property to the north remains until such time as the baggage road is extended to the north of the Great Wall property. And just to note, because the adjacent property isn't the subject of this application, this isn't a formal recommendation the council should act on tonight. The only outstanding issue for council is the applicant's request for council's consideration and approval of a reduced buffer width to residential uses, as I previously mentioned, along the east boundary from 25 to 10 feet, and there has been no written testimony received since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, Sonya, I just want to make sure I understand the cross-access issue. As on the, with the one recommended cross-access, if we're looking on the south side, access to the facility is via that driveway right there?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, yes, it's right here.
And so that, is it fenced to the right of that?
There is a fence right here.
Okay. And then discussed, then, the, on the north end, that would go out to the Great Wall parking lot and access to that point.
That's correct.
Someday, that will continue on once further land to the north gets developed. Then, for the property to the east, the apartments, does their driveway, again, the access coming in off of records and then can turn up that, and there's parking on both sides, how far does that continue? Their driveway for the apartment complex continue?
Are you referencing this driveway right here? How far to the north?
Yes. Where does that end up? Is it circular or?
Yeah, it goes around the structures. Here, you can see a little bit here.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, Sonya, see that?
This property is right here, and then you can see the driveway that goes clear around here, and then River Valley is right here. Or, excuse me, Records, I mean.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to get a sense of that, to see if that, again, that property's not developed yet, so, but it doesn't look like that would continue anyway. They've got parking structure, parking lots at least, to the north for that apartment complex, so.
Yeah, currently, just a little more information on that subject, on access. When the Great Wall property was developed, they were not required to grant a cross-access easement to the property to the north, or construct a bridge or culvert across the Finch Lateral here. When this property came in with a concept development plan, because this property wasn't required to grant access, they weren't either. But this property is coming before you here next week for a time extension on their application, and they have been talking about doing a baggage road here and a connection to the south. So, if we could get that to occur, then there will be a baggage road from River Valley clear up to the north to this drive out right here, and this access from Eagle Road. So, that's how our code would prefer it to the access to occur instead of the direct accesses that we've got going on here.
Sonya? Does the Great Wall have space for a road through their parking lot? Was that?
They have.
It's hard to tell.
Driveway right here, yes. It could, yeah, it could stub right across the.
Okay, so.
Right here.
There may be space, but it's really not formulated in terms of a, the one in the front of the storage units looks a little bit more like a road, whereas this one would be just through the drive space.
It would be from their driveway, yes. They would have to agree to this, just to be clear.
Are there any further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Sonya, I can't recall seeing in a, in a staff report, the phrase, or I guess a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for strict design review. I just want to make sure that staff feels confident in what the commission was intending with that recommendation.
Yes.
It seems a little arbitrary to me.
It was, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, it was a little arbitrary, but, but yes, staff understands what the commission is requiring.
Any further questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor, over here on this side.
Yes.
If I may, a little clarification on the access requirements. So, in the UDC, excuse me, it is required for storage units to have two accesses. The reason being is, excuse me, the fire code. Typically, with our storage units, they have very large buildings. So, with this particular one here, it's a three-story building. So, when you get to three stories, you're required to have two different fire accesses for the property. Other reasons would be if you're over 124,000 square feet in building size that's sprinkled, it would have to be two accesses. 62,000 square feet on a non-sprinkled building. So, that's kind of where that secondary access is required. It's required by the fire code.
So, my question then is, when the Great Wall's access goes away, what is the secondary access?
That seems to be the topic of discussion, Mayor. That's why we were looking at requiring that access to the apartment complex, because they are tied together, is my understanding. And so, it made sense to put an access through there. It doesn't have to be a full access for everybody just to drive through. I'd be happy with a, an emergency access with, you know, some ballers, some knockover ballers that we would require, so that would satisfy the secondary access.
So, just to follow up with that, would that work in the place where the Great Wall's access is, to have ballers in that location?
Out to, I'm sorry, married, out to Eagle Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be fine also. Yeah. I guess the issue there would be, is whether ITD or ACHD or whoever would allow an emergency access only in that location.
Are there any further questions? Okay, if not, is the applicant here? If you can state your name and address for the record.
Yeah. Nick Mason, 2237 Ramona, Salt Lake City, Utah. So, I am, I agree with most of the staff report and agree with the foresighted architecture review that was talked about during the planning commission meeting. I do understand that this really does come down to the secondary access issue. During the planning commission meeting, it was brought to my attention by Bill and agreed to by the attorney, it was a different attorney, it was a lady, and that the city council does have the authority to extend the temporary access through the Great Wall property. I think there's two reasons to do that. One, being that we would need the secondary access for safety, and two, being that the Great Wall, if they are restricted to having just the access from the south, then, I mean, it's a, they probably will fail. If you can, if I can go to, I'm not sure exactly how this works, how can I go to an aerial of this?
Let me drive.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, so this helps a little bit, but, so, if there is no access right here, and the way that city council has approved it in the past, once this back road right here is constructed, then this will be shut off. And so, at that point, the only access to the Great Wall would be right here. To get there, you cannot come down this way and do a U-turn. There's a no-U-turn sign there, and there is a median blocking a left-hand turn by the county. So, what you'd have to do, and I don't think I can move, oh, I can. They could come in right here, drive around this way, and into there. So, if you, I know you guys do understand retail, it's bad for them. I do think that once this access from the north comes about, then that problem will be solved. I would encourage you guys to approve this with this right here being the secondary access until the road from the north comes through. If I understand correctly, this road is a planned road. If you come up north here, you can see it come off of the street, and it comes through here. It's kind of hard to see, and is designed to continue through there. I believe that you guys probably have the authority to make that happen on the Gossers' application for whatever they are doing. I'm not certain about that. Couple other things. The access through the apartments, while it seems simple because our company built those apartments, it is not. I have approached the ownership, which is, we have ownership in it, of course, but there are other owners, and their concerns have been the fact that, and especially when this gets blocked off, that the way to get to the Great Wall and would be to drive through our apartments, and perhaps to get to a place like the mattress firm right here, the best way to go would be to come here, turn into our private roads and through, and that will only encourage that to happen. I even talked to them about the pedestrian access going through there, and while our portion of the ownership is, I could say, mostly okay with those access points, the, all the people that we need to agree to that are not, not okay with it. I understand their concerns with it, especially with the setup of the possible poor access to the Great Wall. Let me see here, took a couple other notes. Also, I don't know if it was noted, but right here, I believe there is an access agreement already in place for traffic to be able to go through to the Great Wall, and we have agreed to also put that easement in place for the Great Wall to be able to access their property through that back road. I believe that's that, so if I, if you have any questions, welcome to answer them.
Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. I just wanted to clarify, did the owner of the Great Wall agree then to provide this secondary access?
Yeah, he is, he's worried about that access being shut off. I mean, I contacted him early on, the, what we wanted to do is I mean, I contacted him early on, what we wanted to do is to try to make an application to make that permanent. I mean, we've been working on this for, me personally, for a couple of years. But he is concerned. I think he's concerned about how everything is going as is, and if something were to happen like that, access being cut off, there would be a problem. So he is definitely in agreement with it. I assume that, I talked to him last about a year ago, I assume it's the same today. I mean, I don't know what else he would want there. And I understand you guys have the ability to extend that temporary access.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Board.
Just, Nick, a couple of questions on that. One of the challenges, among others, is that application's not in front of us. So if the existing conditions on the Great Wall, which had the Eagle Road access being temporary until that connection to the south is made, and your project makes that connection, and the Eagle Road access goes away, so the application that's not in front of us is a Great Wall application asking to extend that, as you've suggested.
Well, you can make my approval subject to that, and I am completely confident that he'll want that. That's okay. But I don't think you need an application to do that. You could ask the attorney. The application was not made by him. It was a condition put in place by the city council.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Board, the, you're incorrect. I mean, they would have to, they would have to ask. If their requirement in their development agreement states that they will have to close that access once southern access is available to them, then they would have to come and engine. So that's why it's not a recommended condition for tonight. But you're correct, Councilman Board, that by creating this southern access for them will trigger that clause, and so it will require them to come before you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Board.
With that sequence of events, absent that application, what happens if that's your secondary emergency access? It gets closed unless there's action with a separate application, should there be a desire to keep it open for any reason? Which means your secondary access condition couldn't be the Great Wall. We don't necessarily know if that would be approved.
Well, I understand that. I will have to come here to the city to get a building permit, at which time I will have to have that secondary access. So I would encourage you to approve this subject to having a secondary access. I'd be okay with that.
Mr. Mayor, in that secondary access, the other alternative would be, even if it's an emergency with bollards to the east.
Well, it's either that or it's to the north. I mean, we don't have to build this right away. I can wait for the road from the north. I'm saying that I understand we need secondary access, and I will not be able to get a building permit or a certificate of occupancy without that. And so if you guys place that as a condition on my approval, I'm okay with that. And I will have to make sure that we have that access.
Even, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Board.
Even if, one scenario that could happen amongst those is, if it gets, if there was an approval tonight, and it's conditioned on a secondary access, and the secondary access doesn't go east with or without bollards, but the secondary access, if ever, only goes north, and that's the condition of approval, and then in a future application from Great Wall, there isn't, let's just say there isn't a decision to allow that Eagle Road access to remain, now your project and building permit would be stuck until you connect all the way to the north.
I understand that. I need secondary access. I totally understand that. I mean, I would ask if you guys are in support of extending that temporary access. If we are, I mean, I can be, I can be back here soon with Mr. Ma to make that application.
Mr. Mayor, just, I recall the Great Wall application, the temporary access discussion was truly temporary. The idea was that wouldn't serve any other additional purpose. So there is some risk that there might not be a desire to keep that Eagle Road access open?
Desire by who?
By this body? Might be a desire to.
It could, but I would ask for, I mean, the logistics behind that. I really do think that it's a harm to Mr. Ma once that road's built for him just to get shut off. I mean, he likely will go out of business. I don't think that there is a unsafe or extra impact on Eagle Road because of this. I mean, if there is a reason why you guys believe that should be shut off right away and not extended, I'd like to hear that, but I don't, I don't see it myself. But I'm open to the suggestion. I just, I think it makes sense in my mind that you would allow that to stay open, not only for us, but for the Great Wall.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. Did we have anyone signed up to testify?
Mr. Mayor, nobody signed up for this hearing.
Is there anybody who's here who would like to testify on this item in the audience? Okay, the public testimony. Applicant, would you like to come back up and say any final words, or would you like the council to go into conversation further?
I do want to say to Mr. Board, and I was genuine in that, that I would listen to the reasons you had. I wasn't trying to force anything on you. It just, it just makes sense to me. I've met with Mr. Ma several times. He's very concerned, there is a language barrier, there was a trust issue at first, and then he kind of understood that I was working with him to help him. He didn't understand the situation. So once we got talking to him about how, once we build this, that his access would be shut off, then he was very concerned about that. And I hope you can understand that. I think that it is a natural access to go through to the north. I think that's what was intended. It sounds like a cross-access agreement was missed, maybe an error, I don't know. But I know that the ordinance off of Eagle Road is to limit those access points and to provide a back road through in order to limit them. And so in the spirit of that ordinance, I think that you would need to connect these roads. Otherwise, it's just, what was intended is not happening. But, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, not to make this real gummy, but as Councilman Board has pointed out, this is not part of the application. There are some triggering effects by granting secondary access to the north here that is incumbent on that property owner to address. Really trying to weigh in on that now when it's not before you is probably not appropriate. Certainly with that in mind, I think Councilman Board did identify the issue specifically that obviously there is an issue of the secondary access and where it's located and what that might trigger, but ultimately, it's still your decision.
Thank you, Mr. Nary. If I could ask Deputy Chief a question in terms of, on the access. If memory serves me correct, coming out of there, there is a, coming off of River Valley that tapers into a merge left at that point in time, right in that, I don't know how far down that goes. But if that lane, instead of tapering, were to remain a, basically a right turn only dedicated into the Great Wall in the future, would that suffice the secondary access from one direction for a right turn only in? Because I think, at least from my perspective, that's something, because you almost already have a lane there, and we have precedent even further up on Eagle Road where we have right turn dedicated lanes turning into establishments, that doesn't seem to impact the traffic flow. It would be a left, right, out, coming out without an Excel lane in that area. But would a right turn only in suffice?
Mr. Mayor, yes. It's an access.
Okay.
So we could, we could utilize that. And you're right, that lane does go all the way down to where Firehouse Subs is, but if they cut it short and just made it turn into his property, that's an access. I'd be okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a question for Mr. Nary.
Councilman Hoagland.
I just want to make sure, Bill, that I understand that if we approve with a generic secondary access, we don't distinguish where that is, whether it's bollards to the apartment complex as opposed to going to the north. But it's my understanding, once he connects to the Great Wall, if that's the access point, now that is established, there's a way into the Great Wall, that development agreement, of course, probably hasn't been looked at, that triggers that closure of his Eagle Road access. And then, of course, then that brings up, we're back to the same thing, we need a secondary access for the applicant. There would be a secondary access once that other property is developed. So, but that, as you said, is down the road, we're not deciding that, we can't make any decisions about that. So if we provide, as long as we provide a secondary access, and if that is a temporary access with bollards to the apartment complex, and there's not a connection to the Great Wall, and that remains until that is connected up and other actions take place down the road. Is that, am I thinking that through correctly?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Hoagland, you are. So, you know, if we want to designate in the development agreement that, make clear that the eastern access, if the secondary access were to come from the east through the adjoining property, it would be emergency access only and pedestrian access. The northern ones would be full vehicular access. And just to provide some context maybe to the council, when the Great Wall was approved, those median islands did not exist on Eagle Road at that time. So there was a concern about full turns and left turn-ins that have been alleviated to a great extent today. So it would be a different discussion with them, but it would trigger that, like you said, it would be incumbent on them to come and request that remain till the northern access were to open, or something to that effect.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I did have a follow-up for Mr. Nary. Mr. Nary, do we have the authority to keep that temporary access open as a body? Just understand, like legally, do we have the authority to do that ourselves without any kind of other input from either Ada County or et cetera?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Schrader, no, we don't. So as the land use authority, we have the ability, authority to designate the use on the property and the access that you would allow, but because the roadway is an ITD facility, it is incumbent on them. Now, again, if the property owner were to get their permission that it would remain, and that the only impediment to it remaining open was the city's DA condition, that would be a discussion point for that modification.
So, council, I think we have the perfect chicken and egg scenario, where we can approve the chicken to cross the road, but until a secondary application comes in, they can never get across the road. Which sets up, I think I understand what the applicant is asking for, in this case, approve it with the secondary, and another application somehow will have to solve this issue. And if that never happens, then it's never moves forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Board.
To that point, one option, and the applicant can comment on it, if the least problematic option would be an emergency access to the east with bollards, that would not necessitate a connection to the north, so the north wouldn't have its second access. So the Great Wall would be able to retain its existing Eagle Road temporary access, because they hadn't yet obtained their new access. This project would, instead of using the thing that we don't control, Eagle Road access as its secondary, it would instead use access to the east with bollards only, pedestrian crossing, hopefully it's never needed. And that provides the two access points for this project, and it doesn't eliminate the Great Wall's Eagle Road temporary access, which would then go away if and when there's a connection to the north, quite frankly. Which could also then be conditioned with opening up the whole thing as part of that future application.
Do you have a specific question you'd like to ask the applicant to come and answer?
Yes, with that, Mr. Mayor, with that, as one of the options, what do you think of that?
You just reset your name for the record.
Nick Mason. So my understanding is that it's, what triggers that to be closed right now is not for the road to go all the way through, it's basically for the road to get there.
Correct.
So once we build our road, the back road to get to our property, it shuts down.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Board.
That's what I'm, I'm trying to see if there's scenarios where that wouldn't happen. So.
Yeah.
In this scenario, you wouldn't connect to the Great Wall, yet. Your secondary access would be emergency only, turning sharp east and not connecting?
I see what you're saying.
By not connecting, Great Wall doesn't lose its temporary access.
We'd probably have to look at that development agreement, ours, and see if that's possible, but I, yeah, it's a, it's a good solution. If that's possible, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Board.
To make that possible, you would have to obtain somehow your cross-access to the east, even for emergency purposes.
Yeah, and that will be a challenge as well. So that's the thing, is that I could go, I could go to the east, but I need to get permission there. I need to get permission from Ma, which I'm sure that I can. So that's why I'm saying, if we just approve it with the requirement, which is already a requirement that we have secondary access, so you're just approving the use, then we will have to get that either through an application through Ma or a building permit that shows the access going through the east with some type of agreement with the owner to the east.
Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
One question for the applicant. Are you opposed to having this continued until you have that agreement with Mr. Ma? Just alleviate everyone's concern?
I don't think that's necessary. If you think it's necessary, then, I mean, I guess it doesn't really matter what I think on that, but I would, I'm not concerned about him agreeing to it, but given the case that it might not go that way, it might go another way, to make it required on his approval, I don't know, because it might have to come from another area. I mean, there's other ways. There could be another temporary access to Eagle Road we could get approved, or maybe that's not viable, but there's several different ways we could get access, and so I don't think there's any harm in approving a contingent on that secondary access. Approved by fire, of course.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
Just thinking out loud, my only concern is Mr. Ma wanting to keep his Eagle Road access, because if he doesn't keep, if he agrees to your easement or his whatever to the north, that would automatically shut off his access to Eagle Road. Until that northern property is developed, that is like sudden death for him, honestly, even with your access, because he would have, people would have to go all the way up and around and over through grandmother's house and beyond to his place, and that takes some work. I mean, you're really going to want to have some Chinese food.
I totally agree with that. That's what I was saying earlier. I already have an easement to go through to his property. That's already in place. So going to Mr. Ma would be him making an application to make his temporary access extended until it comes from the north.
It's risky.
Well, it, where else is he going to get his access, though? You know, and so I, I have his interests in mind. I've worked with him to, I'm concerned about his access. It does happen to benefit us as well at the same time, but I, I think it could be a problem for him.
Mr. Mayor, a question.
Councilman Hoagland.
Nick. So in trying to protect that access off of Eagle Road for the Great Wall, for the time being, you know, my thinking is, having come in from East River Valley to your storage unit, a emergency access from the apartments with bollards as a temporary solution, until such time the property to the north gets resolved, and then you would, utilizing your easement, put that through, and I would like to see then that, the emergency access for the apartments be closed completely, no longer needed, because there'll be two access points. And then his access from Eagle Road will likely go away once that road is connected to the north. So limiting you from using that easement to go to his property for the time being, to allow that to stay, and having that emergency. to allow that, that to stay, and having that emergency bollard-blocked access until such time that property's developed, that, that's the solution, I'm trying to see if that would work, so your, your thoughts on that?
Well, it, it works for me, but I can't, I can't go to them and put an access under their property. I don't, I don't have the legal right to do that, I don't think the city council has the ability to put a contingency on the, on the property to the right that's already as it is. I will definitely, I would really like to go try to get that done. Like I stated, I have before, there's, we're not the only owners in it, there's banks involved, there's, you know, that's one of the bigger concerns, is that the bank is going to look at it and look at the, the impact on the private roads going through there, and they may have a problem with it, and so I can't, I can't say yes to it. Not opposed to it, but I can't say yes to it. But I, contingent on a secondary access, I mean, I don't think to pinpoint where that access comes from is absolutely necessary. I, I do have the ability with easements to go and build the road to Ma if I had to. And I would obviously have to wait till either I had the access to the east or from the north. So, I, I mean, there's options out there, maybe none of them work, and then I don't build it, I get it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland. Question for Mr. Neri to, to next point about not having that agreement. If we designate that emergency access with bollards, I mean, we know, we have to have it for safety purposes, we have to have a secondary access, i- is that something we can take action on tonight, or is that something we have to work through in agreement with property owners to the east?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Hoagland, so he's correct, I mean, they don't have to agree to even an emergency access through their property. So, but if that's your only alternative that you give them, then that's incumbent on him. The, the only other risk that, from what you folks have been discussing, that's a concern, is say Mr. Mason decides to sell this property, and the next property owner doesn't care about the Great Wall, or care about the impact on their business, and says, we have an easement, we're just going to build it. And if it has, if he has to deal with it, he has to deal with it, it's not our problem. So I, I understand where Mr. Mason's coming from, that's not his objective at all, that is a concern, if you just do an either/or, a, a different developer would probably pick the least expensive option, which is the access they already have. So, you could certainly make it only the east, that will restrict this project until such time they can get that access, or they work out with Mr. Ma to have him come in and get his alternative to his development agreement, and then they can come back and ask you to amend their agreement as well.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hoagland. Comment on that, then, Mr. Neri, that's, that's good advice, thank you for dashing our hopes and dreams on that one, so.
Mr. Mayor. Fire department over here. Tammy did the same thing. I mean, there is one other option, he can reduce the size of his building as well, and, and get under that 30 feet or less, that would eliminate the need for the secondary access altogether.
Thank you, Deputy Chief, and, and, you know, council, I'm just going to say, I, I don't know ultimately what you want in this entire stretch. If you agree with the access that currently exists on Great Wall, if that should be there long-term or not, but I, to, to the point, whatever direction you go, even if you do reduce it down, it's still, and right now, I, I'm guessing it's going to be a cross-access, which would shut that down regardless, so, which, it's really, does come down to which application in the future is going to allow his project to move forward, because I think that that's ultimately where you're, where you're going to be at. He, he can't build what he wants to do without another application from somebody else, in essence.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Morton.
Another question to that point for legal, and, and hats off to you trying to do this, this, all of this sausage-making is because this was all done out of order, and I distinctly remember when this went through, and we thought, oh, this problem's got kicked down the road to 2020, apparently. If the access to the north were to be emergency only with bollards, in that condition, is it possible that that wouldn't constitute a secondary access, which means Great Wall would not yet have to remove Eagle Road access? Their DA?
Yeah, Mr. Members of council, Councilman Morton, without looking at their DA, I, I can't tell you, certainly that's a less restrictive access, so the likelihood of that triggering that, but I can't recall, I don't know if Ms. Allen recalls, does it just say any access or full access? I don't know.
I remember in the DA that it said once access from the south is provided to the Great Wall.
What is that?
That it would shut down.
Yeah, so if it has bollards, is that an access to the south?
Well, no, because if, if it had bollards, then he's got no access anymore. If it's got bollards and you shut down the eagle, then he's got nothing.
So that, Mr. Mayor.
That might be the way to do it.
If, if it takes time to, to look at it.
I'd say that I would, I would try to get that done, definitely, first, but I, I don't know if that should be a condition on our approval.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, council, that, that is the condition, what Mr. Mason said, is when access is available from the south, the temporary access on the Great Wall property will be removed. Either way, this, this application has a condition that they have to comply with UDC standards and provide a secondary emergency access, that is a specific use standard, and it can't be waived, even if fire department doesn't need one, it is a, it is a code requirement. So there is a condition, if the camp, applicant can't comply with that down the road, then they can't develop their property the way they want to do, regardless. It's, I don't believe it's really necessary for the council to determine tonight which, from which direction, or by what means that secondary access is provided. Anyway, just staffs two cents on that.
And if I could just add, I, I think, while I agree that you don't need this week, sounds like in two weeks, you probably should figure that out by, whether or not you want the access on Eagle Road to remain or not, especially if there's a request for a cross-access coming from the north. Just food for thought. Any further questions?
Any further discussion amongst council, or do I have any motions?
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, another question. For legal, to that point, do you have concern if there was a condition that merely said secondary access must be provided, without designating how, that could still suffice?
Yeah, Mr. Members of council, Councilman Morton, that's certainly adequate from an enforcement standpoint, that it's going to be required to show where the secondary access is, and it does have to meet the fire department's standards, so whether it's the north or the east, I, I think we're fine. Again, I'm trying to play those scenarios in my head to see if something would, else would be provided that would not require somebody else to apply for something, and I, I still think someone's going to have to apply for something. It would be my opinion that a secondary access that is emergency access only and not a full vehicle access would be a better argument as to why the Great Wall provision doesn't apply yet, because you still can't get there, and that was the whole point of it. If you can get there some other way, that's why the access was supposed to go away, that's not a means to get there. But, again, that's for another day. So, having a requirement that a secondary access exists, that it can be emergency only, depending on where it's located, but it ca, or it can be full, as long as you understand as a council that it could go to the north, it'd be only emergency access only, and if the intent isn't for that to be a complete baggage road, then that would defeat the purpose of that, too.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I have another question for Mr. Neri. Mr. Neri, is there a possibility that the secondary access, I'm just trying to think through the possibilities, is there a possibility exists here for the secondary access to disappear? Like, what I'm wondering about is, if there's a temporary access to the Great Wall, and we get this other access through the south, and then that meets and triggers that agreement that they'll close their access on Eagle Road, I mean, is it possible that the building could end up being constructed, and then we only end up with one access in the future?
So, Mr. Members of council, I think that's what Councilmember Morton brought up initially, was that without that change in the Great Wall's agreement, then by connecting that roadway through, and him then requesting it to remain open, and that future council decides, no, it's not going to remain open, and that they're okay with that access, you're right, you're going to have a problem, you may have a problem on how to get there, and the secondary access would go away.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up, just some discussion, I'm, I'm okay with the temporary access remaining to Great Wall, I don't personally see an issue with it at this time, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is that, is that going to be a decision within council's discretion completely, or is that something that we would need, like, is there any body like ITD that could overrule our ability to keep that temporary access open, and effectively close it?
So, Mr. Members of council, I, I don't recall specifically if the, when the Great Wall approval was done, that ITD only granted it because we conditioned that it would be temporary, because, again, the roadway conditions were significantly different at that point in time than they are today. So I don't know the answer that, that ITD is fine with that access remaining forever, and that the only condition that's triggered in it is ours. I can't tell you that today, so I don't know, but ITD definitely has a role in whether the access can remain.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Mr. Mayor, some further discussion, that, that occurs to me as a significant risk if we haven't established whether we have the authority to keep that temporary access open, and so I would think that another condition might be appropriate in addition to secondary access, which would be an agreement from ITD to keep that secondary access for us, and not take some kind of action.
And I think that goes back to the, the point earlier, in the context of like, if he makes the connection, it automatically goes away, unless there's another application some, in some way to address that issue, where you would get ITD to weigh in officially, then if that connection is made, it goes away, there's nothing you can do, and therefore a permit would not be issued. I, it, it is that chicken and the egg, you, you take one step and you lose your other aspect unless another solution is found through another application in the future.
Mr. Mayor, a question, perhaps a question for you, perhaps a question for Mr. Neri, I'm not sure, but it, is it possible for us to, you know, require someone appropriate to contact ITD to get, to get their opinion about this, or is it possible to require a condition, some type of further condition before the permit is issued, that they have, you know, received that, or is it, what kind of options might we have to establish whether ITD will keep that temporary access open?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Schrader, so I, I, my experience has been with ITD, I think as the mayor has stated, unless there's an application in front of them, they won't commit to a decision. They're unlikely to enter in an agreement with the city to keep an access open. If that access was a problem, the reality is, is they can close that access off anytime they want to, they did that further south to the village, and didn't ask the city's opinion about that, they just did it. So, I, I don't think we can really get an answer to that question without an application in front of us. You know, again, logic says a, a future council isn't likely to eliminate an access point when it makes logical sense until there is something better in place, and so I, I guess I would trust the council in the future, even though the application is in front of you today, to apply logic to the situation, and, and would make some sense. Again, the, the situation requires some action from somebody else, you know, the access doesn't evaporate upon the opening of this roadway, someone's going to have to notify them, there's going to be a process, so it, it's not like the day this roadway opens, Mr. Ma's, uh, access is cut off.
And I think that goes back to my original question, at least for, to Deputy Chief, about a right-only-in-access point at this location, thinking about what ITD may or may not allow if we wanted to have any sort of access along Eagle Road based upon the current infrastructure that exists at that location. What may be likely to remain, that they would be not opposed to, and what the city emergency services would not be opposed to as well, if that was the direction to go, because otherwise, the, the resolution is just a north-south frontage road going through all, through that area, but a ride-in at that location allows them to get their traffic in, the connection's still going back the other direction to get out at the light, makes as much sense, so that's why having an emergency access only for that, preventing that cross-access doesn't help, especially if you don't allow ride-outs back on Eagle Road. You know, looking at the overall connectivity through this, what makes sense, and what is safe, should be an important part of whatever decisions are made by all the bodies, but everyone has different things that they care about, and I can't speak for what ITD will care about at any point in time, I would never try to presume.
Councilman Morton.
This is a wild puzzle. So, here may, this may be a solution, and that missing application, to the, to the question on the, the access to Eagle Road, ultimately, the large, long-term plan is it goes away, when that full baggage road is north and south connecting all the way up has been described. Someday, that, I mean, that was the intent way back. So, if there was a DA modification, application from the Great Wall that, that would readdress conditions of that temporary access, and what would trigger it going away, at the same time that this application was going, you could make a global solution. So, for example, we would be allowed to, hypothetically speaking, grant a modification to the DA, and allow the temporary access on Eagle Road to continue, maybe ride-in only, obviously, I guess, ride-in only, ride-in, ride-out, and it would be able to continue even with a connection to the south through this project, but that temporary access would go away, hypothetically speaking, when the north-south access, or, excuse me, when the northern access is completed at some point. So you place a different parameter on what would make the temporary access go away. If that application was in front of us with Great Wall, and if that action was taken, Great Wall would maintain their access, you would have, this project would have its emergency or its, its second access, not even emergency access, it would have its second access through the Great Wall. Great Wall continues and wins, this project goes forward, has its access, the regency's not impacted, it doesn't have to go to the east, and the DA for the Great Wall could then specify, here's what happens to the north, that when that occurs, Eagle Road access goes away, which is the end result everyone is trying to get to. You could even require the cross-access to the north, which we don't yet have. But all of that scenario would require this being tabled until a DA modification comes forward, because you don't know what those specific terms would be until you get there. That gets you there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, I, I think that's the cleanest solution, is, is doing that. The only question I have, Councilman Morton, is would we have to not take action on this one tonight? Do they have to go in tandem, knowing what our, our thinking is on this and trying to solve the problem? Do we have to take, do we have to table this, this decision tonight, and, and wait for the other application to come forward on the modified DA?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Morton.
Only hindsight will tell. Here, I wouldn't think so, but the bad scenario would be, if it gets approved tonight, and a Great Wall application once comes forward in the future, and, and it has, here's the new trigger of when the temporary access goes away, and the applicant says, no, I don't like that, and that's really important to this body, now what? Hopefully that doesn't happen, but if, if we get to that scenario, now we can't come back and, I just don't know. Well, I just don't know what Great Wall would say, maybe the applicant can comment on it, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's the unknown.
I, I'm going to go back to my original comments, I think you can approve this with the condition of the second access, and any other application address these issues without there being harm to the situation. Because, again, I go, if the applicant connects to harm to the situation. Because again, I go, if the applicant connects to the Great Wall, the access is automatically triggered. He can't build his project. So, you've addressed the, I don't know that there's a scenario in here where there's not a solution. A solution has to be found somewhere else before a project can be built. Either A, you're going to make the connection through another agreement through the north and the access will go away and you get a full, a full-blown road. Or B, you make application for a DA modification to allow that temporary to remain open for a short or extended period of time. Some other council action will have to solve this issue. And he can never get a building permit unless that occurs. Would the applicant like to affirm or deny what I've said, even though I've heard you say that?
I just want, yeah, I agree with what you're saying. I don't want this to be tabled in order to get something through the Great Wall because I don't necessarily need the Great Wall. There's other scenarios where if I am able to go through the east or, and have a temporary crash gate or whatever to the north, then I should be able to do that without having to be contingent, without having a condition of getting an application from the Great Wall. I also, not sure the language of an application from someone else is true. If I, what if I get an easement recorder? There's no application done. I've got an easement to go to the east. I come in with a building permit application, land use application for myself and have that, then I don't need anyone else there. So, I, I agree with you that if you approve it, subject to secondary access, which is already in your code, then to restrict it even further, I, I know in Utah, you can't do that. I don't know Idaho law that well, but there's certain guidelines that you have to go by and you can't be more restrictive than what the state statute is. And so, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure if you can do that. You'd know better. I could be completely wrong because I don't know Idaho law as well. But to, to approve this, and I don't even think you need to say it, but condition on secondary access, which I will need, which will trigger in some circumstances, an application from someone else, which would address ITD if they were to need to be addressed, and that's true, then I think we're okay. You know, the other, the other way is to go to the east. I probably don't need an application from someone else. I don't know what the likelihood of that is. I haven't talked to him about temporary.
So, does this require cross-access to the north? Because if, if cross-access is required to the north in this application, unless you remove that, it will trigger once you make connection to Great Wall, whether you get a, get something to the east or not. That's, that's my point. If cross-access is required, you must address Great Wall in some fashion before you can move forward regardless of another secondary access unless you're going to cut off their, their access.
No, because if I come, if I come with an application to put a road through there, he gets shut off. I don't have secondary access. Like, you can't give me a building permit.
Correct.
So, if you make a condition on me having secondary access, then...
Right. Can it condition for you for secondary access? But if you have secondary access that you negotiate to the east, but you're still required to do access to the north to the Great Wall, once you do that, you effectively trigger his ability, you shut off his access.
I, I know.
That's where I'm getting to from that standpoint.
I get that.
For council's consideration.
But that's something that was put in place before me and that I can't do anything about. I do not want to do that to him and I would like to find a way to do it without doing that to him.
Right.
And I don't think we have to do that to him. So...
And that's, that's why I'm going back to, for you, I think you guys hopefully understand what I'm saying from that perspective. If you just go to the east and make that as an option, it essentially can shut down the Great Wall if no solution is found.
And that, Mr. Mayor, to your point and to your comment, I think what I, what I hear the mayor saying is, in every scenario, Great Wall is impacted. You said, there's not a scenario where it doesn't go away.
I agree.
Okay.
But, but to restrict my rights on my property because of that is, I don't think that can be done. Could be wrong. But I, I give you my word that I do not want to do that. I will look for every option not to do that. I mean, for me to have, to not have a secondary access from the north doesn't, it's not a good situation. I want access from the north as well. And so, I don't know.
Counsel, what I was suggesting is, you want the secondary access to the north unless you want, because cross, unless you're going to take away the northern cross-access agreement and essentially remove that road, you want this to be to the north. Otherwise, you do shut down the access from that standpoint. So, allowing just to the east as a bollard does not get, is not a good long-term solution for the Great Wall.
How about you make a condition on me, I'd allow you to do it, that I try to make application first with Ma. I don't even know if you can do that, but I, I will try to do that. I don't, that would be my, the best scenario for us is to have access right through the Great Wall. It'd be good for our business. It'd be good for ours. And then, once it comes from the north, then that access off of Eagle Road probably doesn't matter anymore. And that's, that's probably muddying the water to ask, ask you to do that. But I guess I'm more trying to show what my intentions are.
Any further questions? So, counsel, I'll go back. Do we have any action that you would like to take at this point in time? Are there discussion closing the public record? Five-minute recess.
Mr. Mayor, question for Mr. Nary. Just want to check with you and, and get your opinion, Mr. Nary. If we could simply make a requirement that there be secondary access to the north. Seems like the appropriate solution to ensure that interests are aligned to me. The applicant stated he doesn't think we can do that under Idaho law. And I was curious what your opinion is.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Schrader, so what, what the applicant maybe doesn't get in this scenario, that this is a development agreement. So, this is a contractual arrangement between the city and the developer. So, if the desire of the city is to require the access to the north, I would agree with him that it really is not certainly in his interest, both from a personal standpoint, but also a business interest to simply put the access there and then not worry or concern themselves with the access from Eagle Road from the adjoining business. Again, we have many scenarios where these properties don't develop as they intended. You're here a year from now. It's a different business. They don't care about that access. They don't know, they don't need it. Or they don't care if it comes out of Eagle Road. So, that's what we're trying to wrestle with, is trying to do that. But yes, you certainly can direct that the access has to come from the north. You could direct it, that it simply be secondary access that can be either full-access or emergency only. You can basically leave that scenario, it can only come from the east or north. So, you probably don't have to designate location. But you can do all of that in this because it is a contract. It's not just a land use decision.
Mr. Mayor, question for Mr. Nary.
Councilman Hogue.
So, if, if we authorize moving forward and there is emergency access to the north, secondary emergency access to the north, when that keeps the Great Wall access, right-in, right-out, open, but in the future, I don't want to do something now, again, and future council finds themselves in a position when that property to the north develops, the continuation of the road, the cross-access road is completed and that emergency bollard stays because, well, you said, that's all we had to provide, when the intent is, do we need to stipulate that in that, for the time being, emergency access only to the north until such time that cross-access is completed to, to the north?
Mr. Members of the council, Councilmember Hogue, yeah, I think that would, that would probably be the safest way to assure that it would become a, a through baggage road in the future. If you, again, if you wanted to limit the access now for this purpose and then allow it to be opened at a future point in time, they'll, the future council will be having this discussion about this property on this same, same topic. But yeah, that would at least make it clear.
Counsel? Anyone like to? Ask any more questions? Would you like to hear from the applicant again? Say your name for the record, please.
Nick Mason. Maybe I wasn't clear on what I was saying about your ability to, to restrict this development. I, I understand that you can require access through the north, but to require that my secondary emergency access comes to north when I have other abilities to go other way does not seem right. If, if there's a, if I want to go to the east, I should be able to go to the east. If you're, if you're making a condition on having to go to the north and you're restricting me from being able to go to the east, which is not part of a conditional use permit process in Utah. I don't know about Idaho, but I imagine it's very similar. If there is a safety issue, then I get it, but I don't even think that's there. I just, I, I do not want to give up my right to go to the east regardless of what happens to the north. Again, that's not my intentions. I don't even know if I can get it done. But that's, I should be able to do that. There's already a development agreement in place that has me having to build the road to the north. That's, that's been put in place by the city council. That's there. And so, I have to do that anyway. If we find out another creative way to go to the east, I should be able to do that and not be forced to go to the north. Because, but by forcing me to go to the north, then you're, you're forcing the problem on itself. I, we have to get secondary access. Why pinpoint where it has to be? There's already a development agreement in place that tells me what I have to do. We can work to try to do something different. But that, that development agreement gives me rights to be able to do that. So...
Mr. Mayor.
But I don't want to do that to him.
Councilman Hogue.
To Nick's point, probably a question for Bill again. If that is in his DA and we just require a secondary access, it's up on, to Mason to find that secondary access, but at, when that time comes, there is the connection to the north, that is still enforceable, then to have that opened up, that connection has to be made. I don't want to have a point in time where then, well, we, we got secondary access. I don't need to do it. But if it's in the DA, we can then take action, kind of like action has to be taken on Great Wall once this one connection's made. If that north connection's made, we can, we can enforce it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Hogue, one thing I'm trying to figure out really quick, and maybe Sonya can help me. On the annexation, that's a part of this application, is there a DA requirement to that point that Councilmember Hogue would just ask? That there, if there's already existing northern access on the existing development agreement, but there's an annexation that's attached to this application, is there a requirement that we could put in the DA for that?
I'm not sure I'm following, Mr. Mayor. Getting a little brain-wary. But there, there is a condition, there's a development agreement provision and condition of approval in this application that they provide a north, a cross-access easement to the north and to the south. Is, is that the...
Yes. So...
You're asking?
Yes. So, there is a requirement in the development agreement for the northern access. Mr. Mason just said he already has a development agreement, but it's the part of this, right?
There's a development agreement on the northern portion that's already in the city that was annexed with the regency at River Valley property to the east, the multifamily development.
Right.
So, there's an existing agreement and then there's the DA that's recommended as part of the annexation.
Right. And that, so, so I'm clear, and since I don't have the DA or the condition in front of me, that, that portion that's being asked to annex doesn't have any connection issue to the existing one that's already been annexed. He's not asking for a development agreement to make sure it all connects into one baggage road?
Hang on, just a second. Let me look at something real quick.
So, the reason I'm asking, in the condition, so, Mr. Mason raised a different point, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a conditional use permit. So, there's a DA attached to the annexation. There's a conditional use permit that's required for these, for the storage units. You can condition what that, whatever that is. I mean, you can condition it for a access from one direction or another. I think what he's, the point he's making, though, is it's not necessary because whether it's to the north or to the east, makes little difference to the city as long as it's there. So, you could do that. I think what his point is, is there's no need to do that. That if you get a secondary access through the east and that all works itself out, he does only need to produce a cross-access easement that has to get recorded and that's all we would need. He's right. We don't need another application for that.
Mr. Nary, I guess my point I was trying to make is, I, I agree and I understand, but as soon as he makes a cross-access connection to the Great Wall, their access goes away. So, ergo, ergo, if they're fine with the Great Wall's access going away, just by, just by making that cross-access connection, Great Wall loses their access. And that's why I want council to be very mindful of, of whatever direction they provide, if they don't require a northern connection to be made as a secondary access or once this connection, that's gone.
Mr. Mayor, however, to your point, that there acts, he creates that cross-access as required, that it goes away, he no longer has a secondary access.
If he goes to the east, he does.
If he goes to the east.
If he goes to the east, he's got a secondary access and he's made a cross-connection to the north and Great Wall loses their access. That's the domino effect of the way the conditions are laid out and requirements. And I just want council to make, be mindful of that, whatever they want for the future. Again, I go back to the overall bigger picture on what you want from a baggage or an access on Eagle for the Great Wall and when you want to trigger that. But you don't have a way to stop that right now. Approve with the secondary access to the east, connection made, Great Wall goes away without another application. Unless I'm missing something. That's the way my bouncing balls work.
Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, you are correct. I think, though, what Mr. Mason's said is because that is the only way he gets his secondary access is through Great Wall. It is incumbent on him to work with that property owner to maintain that access. Because otherwise, he won't be able to get a building permit.
Except for he's talking about going to the east.
Oh, I see.
If he gets secondary access through the east and makes the cross-access, just by default, it goes away regardless of his best intentions.
Yes, you are correct.
It ends without another application.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I might ask Mr. Mason a question about the east connection. I mean, if they don't want to play ball with you, you're, you're, you're not going to have an access. Is, is that my understanding?
I might not have an access right away, but I can go further to the north through there. I, you guys have put development agreement in place with Ma and with us. So, can you really restrict those development agreements from this conditional use permit? You'd have to go back and amend the development agreements to take rights out of that development agreement. You can't, you can't use a conditional use permit to restrict those. I'm, I'm only saying that because I, trying to avoid where this might go, which to me makes no sense. It's... I, I hope you see where I'm coming from. I, you know, you approve this condition on secondary access, which you don't even have to do. I need to get that anyway. First thing I'm going to do is go to Ma. I'm going to try to get him, while he's going to make an application. He already signed an application with me before and I met with staff and we decided not to move forward with it. He's willing to do it. Okay? If for some reason he doesn't, then that's his choice. And then I connect the road. He, he knows what my next step would be, the only other way I could develop it. He's making that choice. He's going to, he's going to sign that agreement. So, if he doesn't sign the agreement, my next move is to go to Gosser and make sure that, that that's in his application. Because I don't want secondary access. I don't want secondary access through our apartments temporary. I don't want that. I want a good access. I want it to come from the north. Or I want it on a temporary basis from Ma. I, I see the concerns, but I, I think that, I mean, another thing is, I could come in for an application for another mattress place, and bam, it's gone. There's no need for secondary access. We, we tried to list this property for years, and we're not able to sell it, and we've come up with a solution to do it, and to make it happen, and that's why we are here today. But that is, that is something to consider. Almost any other use does not require that secondary access.
Thank you. I, I agree. You're also coming in for annexation. Like I say, this is two pieces.
Well, I-
So, it's, they're, they're, they are coming in tandem together, and yes, you could do anything that you are currently permitted on what's annexed in the city. The other acre, you cannot.
I agree. So, it would just be on my piece where that would happen. I get it, and I'm not trying to strong-arm or anything. I'm just, I'm, I see what your concerns are, and they're my concerns as well. And I think that the natural way this would play out would be in, in Ma's best interest. The way I would do it would be in Ma's best interest. But I do have the right to go other ways with my access, I believe. We're doing circles at this point. So, thank you.
Are there questions for the applicant from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Borton?
Move to close the public hearing on item 6E, H. 2019-0121.
I have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, Dave. You guys have it. Is there a discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be making a motion-
Councilman Borton.
For, for discussion where this, I'll just make a motion. We've discussed this at length. I move that we approve item 6E, H. 2019-0121. Mr. Neri, can we take care of both of these in one motion? Okay. That we move, or that we approve 6E, that includes all of the conditions within the staff report for the hearing date of January 21st, 2020, inclusive of the requirement that the cross-access and baggage road be included and constructed, north and south, as intended, and that a secondary access be provided. How that secondary access will be determined, by the applicant, but the applicant has to provide that secondary access. And the condition that allows for the reduced buffer, 25 feet to 10 feet, be approved as well.
Second? I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Borton?
The reason, we've spent a lot of time trying to discuss the challenge that's going to be in front of us relatively soon, and where this thing's ultimately gonna, we're going to have this discussion. We just had it early, perhaps, before the applications in front of us. But, but nonetheless, the approval has this baggage road and cross-access, north and south, as intended. That's the long-term plan for this area. There will be future applications from, whether it's the Great Wall or, or the property to the north, that will have adjustments on this access to Eagle Road. If this gets built, we know what's going to happen. When the, when the baggage road gets built, and if there's a consequence to the Eagle Road access, we'll deal with that when it shows up. And the applicant has readily said here today that he understands there will be future challenges. But nonetheless, that's the requirement that we always planned for, and conditioning an approval that that cross-access, north and south, that occur, and that still is appropriate. The secondary access requirement still exists. The applicant's afforded the flexibility to try and go east if he, if he's able to. To the mayor's point, it doesn't eliminate the obligation to still build north-south and continue that. We will see the Great Wall in front of us sometime soon, I would, I would think, and we'll address that at that time. But I don't think that it necessitates delaying this. Still is consistent with the long-term plan of, of what that baggage road is intended to do. So, that was the reason why a motion to approve was made.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? If not, let's quick call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton?
Aye.
Cavanagh?
No.
Strater?
Aye.
Burnt?
The ayes have it. Three to two. Thank you. And we were scheduled to take a break at 8:00, but we're just going to take a quick little 10-minute break before we get into the next application. So, with that, we're in recess.
All right, we're gonna call ourselves back into order. The time is 7:45. The next item up is item 6F, a public hearing continued from December 10th for Goddard Creek Townhomes, H2019-0068. I'll open this up for staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next applications before you are a request for a development agreement modification, a rezone, and a preliminary plat. But there are also applications for private street and alternative compliance that do not require action from the council. These are director decisions. This site consists of 4.62 acres of land. It's Zoned R4 and is located at the northwest corner of West McMillan Road and North Goddard Creek Way. A little history on this property. It was part of the Locksaw Falls development, approved back in 2002, and received annexation with the requirement of a development agreement, a conditional use permit for a planned development, and a preliminary plat approval. The planned development allowed office uses as a land use exception in the R4 district under old Meridian City Code. In 2017, a map amendment was approved from office and high-density residential to mixed-use community, and the property was included as a lot in Goddard Creek subdivision. The current comprehensive plan, future land use map designation, is mixed-use community. A modification of the existing development agreement is requested to allow the development of single-family residential, attached homes, and townhomes to develop on the property instead of the previously approved office uses, consistent with the map amendment to mixed-use community, and to exclude the subject property from the terms of the existing development agreement and enter into a new development agreement that just governs development of this site and not the larger Locksaw Falls subdivision. A rezone of 5.03 acres of land is requested from R4 to the R15 zoning district. The proposed development consists of a mix of single-family residential housing types, as you can see there on the screen, attached and townhomes. The attached units are the two units that are attached together. The ones with more than two are the townhome units, which along with the multifamily development to the north, the single-family residential detached homes in the vicinity, and the storage facility planned to the west provide a mix of uses and residential housing options in the area, consistent with that desired in the mixed-use community designation. A preliminary plat is proposed, consisting of 41 building lots and eight common lots on 4.62 acres of land in the proposed R15 district. A revised plat was submitted today, as shown on the right, in response to previous concerns. Access is proposed via private street, West Apgark Creek Lane, via North Goddard Creek Way, a collector's street. Direct access via McMillan Road is prohibited. Private streets, 24 feet wide, and common driveways are proposed for internal access within the development. Although private streets are not typically intended for single-family developments, because the development is proposing a common mew through the site design and access via McMillan Road is restricted, staff is of the opinion that private streets are appropriate. Because on-street parking is not allowed with 24-foot-wide street sections, and parking is a concern in this area due to the existing apartment complex to the north not having adequate parking, the applicant is providing an off-street parking area with 16 spaces at the south end of the townhome units to ensure adequate parking for guests is provided within the development. Although the UDC does not require common open space and side amenities to be provided, because the property is below five acres in size, the applicant is proposing approximately 20% of qualified open space, as shown on the open space exhibit, and a totlot, picnic shelter, and dog park as amenities. Conceptual building elevations and renderings were submitted for the proposed townhome units. Because staff recommended the front of the townhomes are oriented toward the abutting mew, the elevations submitted do not contemplate this design. However, all structures are required to comply with the design standards in the Architectural Standards Manual. The commission did recommend denial of this application, and I'll go through the summary of the commission public hearing. Scott Noriyuki, the applicant's representative, testified in favor. There were quite a few people that testified in opposition, and those are reflected on the record. If you'd like me to name them, I can. I won't guarantee any pronunciations correct, but otherwise, I'll proceed. Several people also commented, again, in the record, and many letters of testimony received on this application, again, in the public record. Key issues of public testimony are as follows: saturation of high-density residential in this area, increased traffic on already congested streets, proposed parking for the development, and preference to develop office uses as currently allowed under the development agreement. Key issues of discussion by the commission are as follows: continuing the project because parent-teacher conferences were occurring the same night as the October 24th hearing, differences between townhomes and multifamily developments, overcrowded schools in the area, and the possibility of busing students to other schools, current thresholds of the roads and impacts that this development will have on them, shifting the central open space along McMillan Road to the east as recommended by staff, uses allowed under the Locksaw Falls planned unit development, commission's action on the previous Goddard Creek applications, conditional use permit denial of the apartments, and conditional use permit approval for the storage units, shifting the central open space along McMillan to the east as recommended by staff, office uses provides the third land use in conjunction with the cellway apartments and storage facility in compliance with the mixed-use community land use designation, and supportive of the design open space and guest parking, but wrong location for the development. Commission change to the staff recommendation. Again, as I stated, the commission recommended denial of the townhome project in favor of office uses as allowed under the current planned unit development and development agreement. There are strike-throughs in the conditions of approval in the staff report, but the conditions are still listed if the council votes to approve this application. There are no other outstanding issues for council. Written testimony since the commission hearing was received from Scott Noriyuki, the applicant's representative. He is in agreement with the staff report, and again, there were many letters of testimony that have been received since the commission hearing on this, and those are contained in the public record. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya. Are there any questions for staff at this time? Is the applicant here? Would like to come forward. Say your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Scott Noriyuki, Northside Management, 6810 Fairhill Place, Boise, Idaho, 83714. First of all, I want to thank staff. There's a lot of technical aspects to this, and there's a tremendous amount of history. I do want to impress upon you the history and how it's changed from the original development and how this entire area, overall area, was planned, and how it's morphed with development agreements and conditional uses and changes throughout the years. So this is dynamically, this area is dynamically different than what the original development agreement and what city council reviewed and approved years ago. And you'll see those different aspects that include the large apartment complex to the north, as well as the mini-storage that's now since been approved to the west, as well as the tremendous growth farther to the west at the primary entrances. With that said, I'm gonna kind of try and track. So if you look at the staff report, I hope you all got my email. If you look at the staff report, page 11, that is the areas I want to key into. So these are all the conversations, and I just want to make this about as simple as possible for everybody. So if we look at Section 6 Decision, and we focus on two key issues of public testimony. Number one, the saturation of high-density residential in the area. With the current comp plan, as it states, that was just adopted, it is desired that we put higher density closer to areas of high employment. You recently have approved the Costco, the Winko, that entire intersection, and Mass Transit. That's a huge employment hub. This makes the most practical sense, because we are sandwiched between a major arterial road, mini-storage, which is commercial, and a massive, high-density apartment complex to our north, as well as a localized street, which is Goddard Creek, excuse me, and it's a mid-mile road. This is a perfect feather when we're talking densities. Furthermore, with those densities, we are sandwiched between what is entry-level rental, and then we've got a whole bunch of single-family detached units. So within those price brackets, we're providing what everybody needs, which is townhouses, which is a first step or a step-up product. They're not rentals. They're owned. That allows people to go from apartments into the step-up and ultimately to the single-family detached, which we are capturing our neighbors, we're capturing our kids, we're capturing, this is the whole goal of comp plans. So with that, I want to move on. I'm gonna try and be as quick as I can. Key issues discussed by the commission is, as far as continuing the public hearing, because a parent-teacher conference, totally accepted, that just happened. We've done the best we could. I actually scheduled another neighborhood meeting at Willow Creek, just down the street to the north. Following that, nobody showed up. So with that, I understand there's some contention, but we've done it about as best as we can outreach. We did flounder on a couple of them, and some of our communications were poor. That's why we noticed four separate meetings, where typically you just have one. Crowded schools, I want to address this. This is gonna be a big deal, and I hope you looked at what was emailed today and what was provided today. The West Ada County School District Assistant Superintendent Joe Yocum, when he reviewed this project, naturally, he gave this troubling letter that suggested denial of the project. I have since reached out to Joe, and you should see an email response from him as recent as today. And with that said, we talked about the timelines. I wanted him to expand upon, what is this problem? Because if you look in the staff reports and you really read it, we are, the schools, the elementary, the middle school, and the high school, yes, they are a bit over capacity. However, our project is not gonna be complete until fall of '21, spring of '22. Per demographics and your calculations, we're only going to add a maximum, excuse me, of 35 school-aged children in this area. With that said, in Joe Yocum's response to me today, they have plans for expansions. They've got new high school coming in, they've got expansion to grade schools and middle schools. And in that email, I had absolute clarity that I wanted to make sure when I stand here in front of you, I was talking factually. So on the assumption that my project is not complete prior to summer of 2021, they'll have capacity for us. So I want to put that to rest. We're not adding to the problem, if you will. It's in writing. Current thresholds on roads and impact. This overall area, Goddard Creek, and these private roads, and McMillan, all of these items were addressed years ago with ACHD and ITDE and the prior PNZ staff and council for the city of Meridian. This property was always identified that the roads would be built accordingly. Currently, per ACHD and current traffic counts, this intersection is at a Level D. Now, I want to clarify, when we talk about levels, A, B, C, D, E, F, with ACHD and road standards, a D is not like high school, where a D means you're not doing good. Now, it is acceptable. It is safe. D indicates that you do have a slightly elongated timeline before you can pull out a merge. However, it is not dangerous. E is still acceptable. F is when it becomes dangerous. These roads were built for the capacity of this property, and ACHD staff report has reviewed the project, and they support it. We agree with all the conditions of approval, as per staff. We are not required with this application to provide open space, but I do want to point out, we have 27% open space. 22% is countable, if you will, but 27% when you count all the buffers. We have multiple amenities. We have pedestrian and vehicular connectivity that is extensive. We're above and beyond. And then, I guess with that, in closing, in reading every aspect of the new adopted comprehensive land use plan, all the goals, everything that you guys want and you worked on, we are hitting every single point of this, every point. And then furthermore, I will defer in rebuttal. I do have an expert here to talk about the virtues of why light office just isn't gonna work here. And it has to do with access. It has to do with reality and development, and also talking about the demographics of housing, which is a big thing that's been in the news on behalf of Meridian and the entire Treasure Valley. This is a product needed. With that, sorry to be long-winded. I'll stay up for questions.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cavanagh.
Scott, Happy New Year. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
If I remember hearing correctly from staff, that horseshoe loop is a private street, not a public street.
Yes, sir. It is designed to a public standard. We are 32 feet back-to-back of curb, so there's, we have parking, and it works for the fire department and safety. However, I had to go private, because the northern road that provides access to cellway is a private road, so you can't have a public road that comes off a private road. Does that make sense?
It does, Mr. Mayor. Scott, so I guess from a width standpoint, it allow on-street parking, from a function, probably not gonna allow for lawn-on-street parking with your development.
No, this is actually cool. Thank you. I love this question, parking. Okay, so within this project, I have 41 units proposed, okay? They're all single-family. They are attached, but they're single-family owned, not rentals. So with 41 homes, if you look at the last page I emailed all you, 41 homes times four equals 164 spaces. What that is, is the base requirement for two cars within a garage, as well as two cars in their driveway, okay?
Okay.
So first of all, we're taking care of everybody who owns and lives there. Secondarily, we have 16 visitor parking stalls, because this is a big thing. We heard from the neighbors and we heard from staff. So we've got these 16 additional parking spaces, which include handicap spaces. Then on top of it, our private on-street parking with our 32 feet back-to-back of curb, which is designed per ACHD, that's providing us an additional 22 parking stalls. So at the end of the day, we have 218 spaces for 41 home development, which equates to 5.31 spaces. And then on top of it, we are willing to work with on the northern portion, because with the cellway apartments, I've heard from the neighbors that parking is horrible, and it's pouring over into their subdivision or areas. With that, our open space, if you look at this northern exhibit, is everybody looking at the screen?
Yeah.
So up against Cellway Rapids Lane, that was built as a three-quarter road section. We'll go ahead, because it's a private road, we technically don't have to treat that buffer as if it was a local road. If you would allow me to reduce it, we'll go ahead and widen that road to 32 feet, which creates additional parking for cellway and takes the pressure off Kelly Creek.
Okay.
We're fine with it. We're cleaning up somebody else's mess.
Maybe.
But we're happy to do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cavanagh.
I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna push back a little bit, only because you got to enjoy very robust conversation amongst my colleagues for the past 90 minutes about storage units. And there's a reason why we continue to see a lot of storage units in front of us, is because people aren't using their garages to store their vehicles. They're using their garages to store their stuff. Your piece about the on-street parking is kind of where my question came from again, is, again, you're the expert, I'm not, but when I look at your elevation, your map here, I see maybe one location where on-street parking is gonna be compatible, and that's in front of your common open space. Everywhere else, I don't see it. So on the map, use the mouse, show me where
I love it.
your residents are gonna be able to park.
Okay, so what you've got, no, thank you. This is critically important. So if we just kind of roll around here, we got one car, ah, I'm sorry. How do I go back, Sonya? There we go. Ah, now we're fighting each other. Okay, one car here, one here, one here, three here, one here, three here, one here, one here, one here, one here, 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 and then the same over there. So that's where the calculation comes from, because there's no question that where the driveways are together, yeah, you can't have a car parked on the street. So we've run all the mathematics in that area to prove that out.
Yeah.
Now, that's just showing that we're doing more. Now, when we do cellway rapids, if you guys feel like you want us to clean up the cellway apartment issue for the benefit of neighbors, that's where this stretch widens, right here, because right now, there's parking on the north side up against that sidewalk, but there's no parking along here on-street. So we're open to that.
And, Mr. Mayor, Scott, the reason why I'm pushing back on this is because I really think the cellway problem is going to become your new owner's problem, in that you're gonna have cellway residents are gonna try and find places to park within your community, and your parking spots are gonna get full, and your on-street parking is gonna be full, and your new residents who have bought these cool new townhouses are gonna be upset at us, because we approved something when you've already, and you're right, it's somebody else's parking problem, but you're contributing to that by building something that's a little more dense here. And so
Okay.
I'm trying to solve the problem before it starts.
Thank you so much, and all due respect. If we didn't think we were building something that would make money, number one, we wouldn't do it.
Sure.
Number two, I have spent 15 hours on this property, working with Wright Brothers, who developed the mini-storages, and they just improved the frontage on McMillan. I've been there weekdays, mornings, evenings, weekends, and I have to be honest with you, every time I go out there and I update the notification signs, I don't see a parking issue. I don't see overflow onto that entire cellway rapids every time I pull out there, and you can look at my notification pictures, I don't see anything. Now, I don't live there.
Right.
I'm just telling you, I've been there Saturdays, Sundays, 5:00 PM, 8:00 AM, middle of the day, holidays. I think we're addressing it. Due respect.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Not being combative.
Last question. And Scott, your elevations, I gotta be honest, I really value when a developer wants to build in Meridian, they really get creative, and we see a lot of diversity in architecture depictions. At least what's been provided to me, I don't see a lot of that. And so help me understand what you're doing that makes these, you know, units stand out as being unique, and not just in terms of color.
No, fair enough. That's excellent question. So I want you to look at the top left hand and the bottom right hand. I want you to see, and sometimes it's really hard with modeling, because, but the architectural modulation, these particular buildings are these particular buildings are dodging back and forth upwards of four, five, six feet. And there's multiple materials. Now, I understand that you would like me to have this completely modeled, but at the onset of entitlement, I need to give you an idea. And I work with the conditional use and with Sonya or Bill to ensure, excuse me, ensure we have got, we've got the modulation. I realize the lower left-hand side looks pretty bland and we could be conditioned to create some modulation there. And I'm very open to suggestions when it comes to architecture.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Just wanted, I had a couple of questions, but I was hoping you could walk us through the timeline on when you acquired this property. Clearly, it was zoned as light office and R4. And what your thinking was in terms of what you were going to do with it. To me, the zoning, banking on a zoning change is an equity risk.
Agreed. With that said, I've got Taylor, who's going to come up, and I need him to further discuss that. The reasoning is very sound. And I want you to hear why light office, in our opinion, as developers, investors, builders, just hasn't worked out and why the property has come before this body multiple times and no developer is willing to build light office. With that said, I'll stand back for a moment.
Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify my question a little bit in terms of what I was getting at. I understand from reading the background materials for this application that office is not the highest and best use for the property. But what I'm curious about is, you know, were you intending on achieving a zoning change to this new residential use in order to make the project pencil? Like, what was the thinking there?
Absolutely. Because what we've come forward with is the highest and best use from a personal investment and development standpoint. It's also a massive need within Meridian and Ada County, City of Boise, that's documented that townhouses are phenomenally wanted, needed, desired, and underserved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I understand that. If there's more detail on the timeline, I don't know how that would answer my question differently.
Timeline regarding the history or timeline for completion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
What I was getting at with my question, I was trying to understand, if you're not the original owner of the property, the original owner, when they were, you know, working on this entire subdivision and that there was kind of a master planning overlay concept at that time, you know, there was a concept of a mixture of uses eventually. And this became zoned with a mixture of uses. So there was a use designated already in this area for high-density residential. And this was clearly zoned as R4 and light office. And what I want to understand is, did something change? Like, when you acquired the property, I mean, did you understand, you know, I'm assuming you understood how it was zoned. Did your thinking change? I mean, what was the original intention for the property? And did you really just have to pivot into a higher-density residential to make the project work?
Scott, maybe if I could help out with this and maybe even ask Sonya to speak in on the concept of neighborhood centers. If I'm not mistaken, that's really where this concept came from and how that was at one point in time, the city's viewpoint, and how that has since changed.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Comprehensive Plan land use designation is now mixed-use community. The proposed development is consistent with that designation and with the density desired in that designation.
If I may interject, she's absolutely correct. It's a mixed-use designation currently within this area, which has morphed over years. Development agreements have changed, the overall designs have changed, the overall uses have morphed to a degree. So within the mixed-use, correct me if I'm wrong, Sonya, three distinct, different characteristics. So in this area, we're actually providing a fourth. So we've got single-family detached classic subdivision to our east. We have high-density, super-high-density apartments, rentals, to the north. We have, to the east, we have commercial, which is storage. And then further, excuse me, to the west, I may have said east, but to the west. And further to the west, we have a massive commercial center now that you guys have developed, approved, created since this project even came on board. And then we have a primary arterial road, which is McMillan. So now what we're doing is we're coming in with a fourth use within the mixed-use, which is townhouse, which in the plan that was adopted states that the City of Meridian desires, wants, and needs a diversity of housing opportunities. In this area, there, in the immediate proximity, there are no townhouses. There is rentals and there is single-family detached. That's it. There is no diversity.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Could you expand upon, please? You were mentioning you're open to widening that road or helping to provide more parking along that road. Could you expand on your thoughts on what you'd be willing to do to, you kind of bridge the gap between the R4 zoning that you have at the, you know, desired zoning that you're trying to get?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so number one with the road, and then I'll address the zoning. Number one with the road, and you can verify and speak to this. He'll give me the head nod. I will design it with a 32-foot back-to-back curb as per ACHD standards. Even though it's a private road, it is a private road, but we have the access easement, so I already have that in place. I don't have to negotiate it. And essentially, what we do is we take the northern side of our property, or if you will, the southern, can you bring up the aerial, Sonya, please? Or the southern portion of that road. Everybody, I'm just making sure everybody's tracking with me. And essentially, okay, so when we look at, thank you, Sonya. So when we come in here, Selway Rapids. So when you're looking at the aerial photography, you can see the northern part of Selway Rapids has curb gutter sidewalk. On the southern half of it, it's just curb. What we would do is we would come in and we'd tear 100% of that curb out. And then we would take the asphalt and we'd widen it by an additional, whatever the dimensional requirement is, whether that be four feet, six feet, eight feet, what have you, put in another curb and put in another sidewalk. And what that does is that creates that additional on-street parking. Okay, from a zoning standpoint, I think this is really critical to point out that you're seeing in the application that I'm applying for an R15 with a DA. So the DA caps it, all right? Because you only go R4 within your code. You go R4 to R8 and then R15 and then R40. Selway was R40. I'm, right now, as I sit, I'm at 8.8. I'm almost at eight units to the acre, where I could just do an R8 and not freak anybody out. But the only thing I can do is go with the R15, but I'm doing the DA where you guys, I cut the contract between the land and the city that says, okay, that's great. You get the R15 zoning because you have to comply with your development code. But you cap me, and Mr. Nary can verify this, with the development agreement, you cap me at exactly what I designed. 41 units. I cannot go above that period. So that gives assurances that when you give me the R15 zoning, ideally, I hope, I can't play monkey business and come back and ratchet it up to 15 units to the acre. It is subject to my design and my layout, period, and my density. I hope that clarifies that.
That did clarify my question. Mr. Mayor, I have an additional follow-up question. How many additional, how many additional parking spots, I guess if you will, would that add to that street, if you guys have calculated that?
I didn't even calculate it, but if I, I mean, if we just run some simplistic math real quick. Sonya, can we go to my layout, or maybe I can figure out how to get to my layout?
Let me drive.
So Mayor, if I can interject while he's looking.
The chief?
So Mayor and Councilwoman Schrader, just for clarification, Selway Rapids Lane right now is a fire lane. So there is no parking allowed on that lane, on that street whatsoever. That's why he's never seen any cars there, correct? So it's our only way in and out of that apartment complex other than there is one emergency access that is in there. So according to city code, all private streets are required to be fire lanes. So it does give the option, though, in the code, that the fire marshal can approve parking on a private street.
Awesome. Thank you. I just ran the math and I could provide, I'm going to be conservative. I could provide 12 additional spaces on the south side of Selway Rapids with his blessing.
Councilman Burt.
This gentleman, that's to your right, he's Deputy Chief Joe Bonjorno. I would appreciate if you would address.
I apologize. I'm sorry. I was aloof. I didn't mean it that way.
Are there further questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing, and since I didn't go through this beforehand, but anyone else coming up will have three minutes to testify, unless you're testifying on behalf of a group. Then as a HOA president or group, then you have up to 10 minutes. And the applicant will have the last word. So with that, Mr. Clerk, were there any sign-ups?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there were eight individual sign-ups. Four indicated they wished to testify, and first is Janie Pullman.
And when you come forward, if you could please say your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Janie Pullman. I live at 5030 North Goddard Creek Way. I'm directly across from the Selway Apartments. So what I would like to speak on today, and I've learned that three minutes is not very long, is the traffic. And we all realize that the city council can do nothing about the traffic. It's ACHD, we understand that. But it is still a big problem for the community. I have here, I pulled this off the ACHD today about the current traffic counts. Of course, the top one is Goddard Creek, right there at our T intersection. 3,005 cars in a 24-hour period. And the next one below it is McMillan Road, east of 10 Mile. Almost 10,000 cars in a 24-hour period go through there. So I'm not sure where the applicant has been driving around looking. He's missing all this traffic. I don't, I don't know how that's happening. But now if I could have the overview, please? Anyway, if we get that, what I wanted to also show about the traffic is that right next to where his proposed portion is, right there at Goddard and McMillan, is a T intersection. Across the street from that is that big canal, okay? 125 feet to the east is the intersection of Palatine Road and McMillan Road. And that is where the Hunter Elementary School is. So in 125 feet, we have two T intersections with the canal. So there's nothing anybody can do about the road. And we have buses going in and out of there. And the traffic is already such a problem for us that live in that area. And you can see the traffic count is only going up and up and up in that area. We're more concerned in our area with the traffic than we are his project. And that is why we really want the units to stay, or excuse me, the zoning to stay to the office. Now, I know that we've heard him before talk about they're going to say how many cars come into a business and da-da-da-da-da. We don't agree with what he's saying compared to a family coming and going, coming and going, coming and going, multiple times in that area. Between the large apartment complex on McMillan Road and Meridian Road, I think it's called the Prelude, down to 10 Mile, we have almost 700 units right now without any more being approved. And right across from me is the high-density Selway Apartments. We just, this is just not compatible with what is existing. And we really are hoping and praying that the council will not approve this project. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Mr. Mayor, next is Pam Fiskus.
Hi, I'm Pam Fiskus, 2393 West Apgar Creek Drive, Meridian, Idaho, 83646. And I live in Kelly Creek Subdivision. And I live on the corner of Apgar Creek and Goddard Creek. And thank you for pointing out the fire lane, Joe. And I wanted to say that the planning and zoning is against this project, first off. Secondly, I wanted to say that Scott called meetings and never showed up. And we weren't sure if meetings were really going to take place. So the Willow Creek, we didn't know if that was really going to take place because the meeting before, he just didn't bother to show up or counsel with us. We, when Meridian had a vision, when we first, when I first bought my home, I'm an original homeowner of high-density, medium-density, low-office, commercial. And Kelly Creek and Locksaw are medium-density. Selway is very high-density. And as Janie said, we have a serious traffic problem on Goddard Creek. You can't even make a left out of, onto McMillan in the morning or at night because the traffic is backed up all the way to 10 Mile. And the street can't be widened. I wanted to find out, I had a question for Scott about fire hydrants, how that he was going to place that in that complex with all those parking spaces? Because you have to be 15 feet from a fire hydrant. I don't know if that's something the council could address to him, or maybe Joe could. Okay. When we asked Scott originally about the price points, he said $250,000. And at the last meeting we had in City Hall here, he said the sky's the limit. He wasn't sure. And if, he's talking about families jumping from an apartment to a townhouse, $400,000 townhouse, that doesn't seem logical. We have a lot of townhouses right in the area on the corner of Linder and McMillan and on both the north and the south sides. Back in 2017, when we approached the council to stop, we were for the storage facility, but then they threw the apartments in there. I think there was 84 units or something like that. We were against that because of the traffic and the volume. And I have submitted pictures to the council, and I'm sure you can see them, about parking in front of my house. I can't even park in front of my house and guests can't park in front of my house. I have people park in front of my driveway in front of my mailbox. We've recently lost a small section of Lowlow Pass Lane because of something that happened in our association. It's something that's owned by the homeowners, but they went ahead and painted the curbs red. So that took away a lot of parking for homeowners and their extra cars. Because some of our homeowners have seven cars because they have a lot of children. Let's see. We have a private park that
If I can get you to wrap up, please. Your three minutes has gone up, but you can wrap up.
Okay, okay, real quick, we do have a private park. And it's maintained by Kelly Creek and paid for by Kelly Creek, but it's used by the Selway occupants. And hundreds of them use our park, even though our signs are posted. And I don't, if there's not a big area for them to, some type of common not a big area for them to, some type of common area for this new development that's asking for our 15 rezoning, I feel that our park is gonna be utilized by people also. Okay.
Council, any questions?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Penny Fisher.
Hi, my name is Penny Fisher. I live at 2382 West Apgar Creek. I'm actually just across from Pam Fiskus. I'm kitty-corner from this project, so I will be directly affected by this project. Um, I do wanna put on record that I'm opposed to this project. One, as I said, it's not necessarily about the parking, it's not necessarily about the overcrowding of schools. I understand you guys can't control that. It's about the quality of life. They're saying it's a great feathering. We, it was proposed previously when they did the storage units to put it there. It was moved over and left this area. They did try to previously put apartments, and they did propose apartments. It has been, it was rejected, uh, based on the traffic overcrowding, that stuff that was, um, that they're saying that they are. The Selway Creek where they were saying is the, it is a fire road right now. That, it is the only entrance into the Selway, which is high-density now. And according to the original back, the comprehensive plan, they had to put that as the high-density. I do know things have changed and things have been updated, but they did still choose, even with this new, to leave the zoning. And the only way that this project would be approved is if they changed the zoning. But even the comprehensive plan, over many, many times, has left it as the R, the R4. So I'm asking for you guys to consider that and not change the rezoning, which would then make this project not possible. Um, again, it will, he is trying to, he said it would feather it. Yes, what he's proposing, he's saying that our homes, our home values are higher than what he's trying to make this because he's trying, he's saying the apartments are rentals. Who is to say that they are, do not come in, and somebody comes in and buys because they're townhomes? Who's to come to say that they won't turn into all rentals? We can't guarantee that. Which then, with rentals, there's no guarantee, um, that there's only gonna be two cars per unit. The other thing is, he says there's only gonna be 34 or 35 kids in a 41 unit. They're two to three bedrooms. I don't know about you, but if I have two to three bedrooms in a 41 unit, that's more than 35 kids. And when I spoke to the principal, they, they don't have, in Willow Creek, right there in the mile, they don't have room for any more kids. The only way, option they would have is to bust them. Yes, they do have plans right now. The only thing they have is a high school to be built. They do not have any other plans for an elementary. So Hunter's overcrowded, Willow Creek is overcrowded, Paramount is overcrowded. So I do not know where they would put those 35 or additional kids. Um, I was told that they would be bust. So I'd like you to take that into consideration, and also the, the, um, planning and zoning denial, that they recommended denial for this project. Again, this is the second time they've tried to put it in, so again, I'm asking you to also, uh, decline this and do not do the zoning and, um, decline this project. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Borton.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Oh, yes.
And I was gonna ask Pam the same question, but amongst, we read all the written materials that come in in preparation for the hearings, and your December 5th letter was one of many that we got.
Yes.
And you referenced the petition that was-
Oh, yes.
That has signatures gathered. So the, the two questions are, one, if you know how many signatures were gathered, and, and number two is-
Uh-huh.
If you can describe the process of how those were gathered, meaning at the neighborhood meeting, for example, or walking the neighborhood?
Okay, so, um, I'm not sure the final, it was around 100 petitions that we got, but we, um, myself and Pam went house to house, door to door, with a bunch of other people in Locksaw Falls. We just explained, we gave them a picture of, with the card showing, uh, the proposed, um, site. We gave them, we showed them the view of what they wanted to build, and we just asked, we're saying, we, you know, we explained to them, this was our community, and we didn't think that it was a good use. We asked them if they wanted to sign, and we had over 100 signatures, or close to 100 signatures when we did that. Um, we didn't hit the full entire neighborhood. We only stayed right there, close to, um, right there in the Kelly Creek. I mean, we only hit probably half of it due to time, but if we could have more time, I'm pretty sure we could get more signatures. Because I had plenty of people that told me, because I, I personally did it myself, that's why I submitted some of those. Um, we did have plenty of people that said they would have signed it if they had time, but we were told it had to be turned in by a certain time.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borton, we do have that in there in the public comments as 2019-12-9 residents of Kelly Creek petition, so it is in the public record as well. The petition that Mr. Borton referenced is in the public record there as well. To see those signatures if you choose.
Mr. Mayor, I saw it-
Councilmember Borton?
Attachments to various letters. I hadn't seen a compilation of all of it as one. I must, I might have missed it, but I just saw it attached to your letter and Pam's letter and-
Yeah, because we each went out and did it ourselves, and so we, we kept submitting them as they came in.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thanks, Pam.
Any additional questions?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, your last of the pre-signed in is Cheryl Tolman.
Hello, City Council Mayor. I appreciate your, um, thoughtfulness tonight, making decisions based on existing neighborhoods and what's best for them. Um-
Can you give your name and address?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Cheryl Tolman, 2695 West McMillan Road. I get to deal with the 10,000 cars every day. Um, yeah. So please don't take tonight's attendance as an accurate representation of those in opposition. The sign, um, had the wrong date for the longest time, and now it's pulled it over on itself, and it's, I couldn't read it as a passenger in the car. I had to get out to physically read it. But I did look up at the, on the agenda to see it was tonight instead of last week when it was advertised for a long time. Um, so I have a few general concerns. First of all, there's a lot, um, the fallacy that we need to put in the townhouses here because Costco's gonna need, um, people to work or whatever. There is plenty of open space closer to Costco that hasn't been developed that won't affect existing neighborhoods that could be built on. Um, and as was stated, who's to say that these townhouses don't become rentals? Years ago, um, I have a concern, who holds developers accountable? Because years ago at a, um, neighborhood meeting, we were promised by the adjacent neighborhood that we would have a right-of-way, um, in case McMillan got too busy, which we laughed at at the time because there was 10 cars every half hour or so. And now we're not laughing. There's a fence blocking it, and we, despite repeated requests and showing them our legal right-of-way, we still can't access it. So we're left with this McMillan Road, and please do not add more cars to it. Um, and in the past, I've heard arguments like, um, this lot's empty for so long because nobody, you know, wants to develop it, or there isn't a need. There's definitely a need for R4. It's just, I believe that there's a higher profit margin for higher density, so that's the route the developers choose to take. Um, but we need the single-family homes, and there are neighbors that don't need to suffer the effects of overcrowding. So please, um, don't use the argument that they've already invested time and money because they knew going into it, it was R4 and light office. And what about the residents that live there that have invested time and money in their schools, in their neighborhoods, in their homes? They've put in a lot of stock, and a lot, some of us have lived there for decades. And I don't feel that we should always have to suffer at the developer's hand for their profit. So please, remember the people who try to be good neighbors, those who volunteer, those who have to deal with the traffic long after the developer moves on. Remember the kindergartners who are stuck with 28 kids in their class because growth isn't managed. And remember those that have lost their view. Anyway, I appreciate you listening to the residents and I-
Cheryl? Thank you. Any questions?
Sorry.
Councilmember Haver?
Same, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Alright, is there anybody else who'd like to provide testimony on this application? Please come forward. Say your name and address for the record.
Uh, Taylor Schmidt, address is 4192 East Esperanto Street, Meridian, Idaho. Um, I do work with the developer, but I'm also a residential real estate agent here in Meridian at Realty One Group Professionals. Um, City of Meridian and the Treasure Valley as a whole have a high demand for diverse stepped-up housing. Um, we don't want the sprawl. City of Meridian wants the mixed-use, vertical residential. Um, right now, there really is rental apartments and single-family detached housing, and with how the market's been going, prices are soaring. I did, um, a new construction sales analysis, and in 2019, in Northwest Meridian alone, there were 866 new construction homes sold in 2019. Average sales price was over $390,000. Um, of those 866, only 11 of them were townhomes. Um, 10 of those townhomes were over the price of $365,000. Next search I did was all active or pending new construction townhomes. And as of, as of today, January 21st, 2020, and there were only nine townhomes. All nine were over the purchase price of $390,000. Right now, um, it shows that we do need a stepped-up housing, and we do need affordability. Goddard Creek Townhomes is a stepped-up project. They're attached, single-family dwellings. Some are three units, some are two units, um, some face a Mew, and some are more traditional. But they do have a two-car garage, and they will be affordable. Um, it does fit the need in between the rental world and the traditional expensive detached housing. Planning and zoning commission touched on this project as being a great project, just not in this location, and they would like it to be office. My last point is this, the developer, he's been developing for over 20 years here in the area, and he has a, he does have experience in developing office buildings in the Treasure Valley. And I can honestly tell you that if this was a good location for office, he would build it. It's not a good location for office, and so I ask that you approve this project, Goddard Creek Townhomes. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? Alright, thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to provide testimony on this application? Alright, would the applicant like to come forward for his final words?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, for the record, Scott Noriyuki, Northside Management, 6810 Fairhill Place, Boise, Idaho. Uh, I'm, I'm got a lot of things to cover here that I'm hoping that I can. Um, I, I do wanna clarify that there was, and, and these are responses to the public testimony. Uh, I, I do wanna clarify that we are not the original developers of the original applications regarding, uh, the, the development agreement modifications, or the storage units, or the apartment complexes. I just want that clarity. Um, we, we are fresh blood. Um, that original proposal of the 84-unit apartment complex, that is not us. We're at 41 units, um, significantly pared down. Um, I, I do wanna point out that with this project, we're also providing some, uh, there were some comments that the only entrance and access point for Selway Rapids is the, the Selway Rapids Road. Uh, with our particular project, um, we did take some advice in our pre-application meeting with the Fire Department, and we are providing a secondary egress out to McMillan. Now, that's not gonna be an active, uh, it's strictly for an emergency, which does create a, a relief valve, not only for our project, but ultimately Selway Rapids. So from a firelife, safety, health standpoint, I feel that's a positive. Um, with respect to, um, uh, light office versus residential, 41 residential units, the calculation is 41 units produces 287 trips per day. Light office would produce 600-plus trips per day based off of what would be allowed by City of Meridian code. That's a significant difference. Um, so I just, and that is per ACHD and the traffic guidelines and the calculations and what the codes are with City of Meridian. These are not made-up numbers. This is what's in, in writing. Um, with respect to that, a, as far as the P&amp;Z denial, the recommendation for denial, I'm personally vexed because we've met all of the code, the comp plan, uh, intent and requirements, the architects within the city who put this together, and it was signed off by everybody. Um, we, we meet all those items, so I, I guess I can't say anything aside from, I, I'm vexed. I don't understand. Um, as far as meetings missed, there was a neighborhood meeting that I was an absolute no-show. Um, and that came down to a notification issue, um, and ultimately, we were continued. Uh, so ultimately, I didn't show up. That was poor on, on my end. I didn't have phone numbers to call people. It's just, I have a mailing list. I profusely apologized. That was one of four neighborhood meetings. Per code, there's only one required. I've done four, alright, I flaked on one, and I'll take it on the chin. Period. I'm just being honest. Um, the traffic, as far as all of the traffic, uh, ACHD has set forth with this, and ITD has, and they've approved our design, our impact, and they've pushed forward with a staff report that is in support of the project. I do wanna also point out that along McMillan Road, through our project, we are, the actual project is 4.6 acres, give or take, but the actual property is over five. And with that, we are conveying additional property on the McMillan right-of-way for the ultimate widening and expansion. However, that doesn't just happen until there's a trigger for ITD or ACHD. Once it hits a point of capacity, that's when ITD and ACHD will allocate the funds, and they will ultimately widen it. However, we have conveyed, or are conveying, that additional widening opportunity as the city grows. Um, as far as fire hydrants, uh, naturally, through the final plat process and the development guidelines, we have, it, it, we have to put them in. Um, we don't have a choice. Whenever, I believe it's 400 or 500 feet, we'll absolutely undeniably conform to that. Otherwise, we'd never get a permit or a final plat recorded. Um, as far as price points, I thank Taylor for, um, addressing that. Um, we all know that market numbers, it's kinda like stocks. They change all day long. However, this is high quality, and it's needed. Um, I wanna thank him, I wanna thank him again as far as diversity. Um, he was very good in the calculations of the need for the townhouses. Um, I do wanna point out, and, and this isn't gonna be a popular comment, but I do wanna point out that within Kelly Creek subdivision, those roads that, on-street parking, those are taxpayer roads. Those are public roads. Everybody has a right to park on those, regardless of how anybody feels. It is not private property. It is not owned by the subdivision or the HOA. Those are ACHD roadways owned by the public. Not popular, I'm just saying it. Um, I do wanna address open space. There's been concern that, that, uh, Selway residents have been utilizing the Kelly Creek open space. Number one, I have nothing to do with that. Number two, I cannot police that. That's not something that I can do or should be my problem. Number three, I do wanna point out, with our project, we have multiple open spaces. We have a, a playground, we have a dog park, we have a gazebo with a barbecue area, we have multiple pathways, and just generalized open space to throw frisbee or throw ball with your, with your son or your daughter. Um, we are taking on a tremendous amount of that, providing a tremendous amount. I wanna reiterate, we have 22% of this project as qualified open space, but the true green area is 27%. That's very rare to see that in subdivisions or projects. Um, and I, I, I am curious, um- And I am curious, no, with that said, I conclude, and I'll stand for questions. I appreciate your time.
Are there any questions from Council? Councilman Holblin?
Mr. Mayor, Scott, I'm trying to, I was a little confused by Taylor. He gave us some market analysis, but if these were constructed and they were on the market today, and I realize the market fluctuates, what is the price point that you're looking at?
I will defer.
Okay.
He is, he's the expert on that aspect.
Taylor, same, same question.
Sure.
If they were built today, what, what would the price point of these particular units be? I know there's two-bedroom, three-bedroom.
Sure. Taylor Schmidt, and we haven't comped out exactly what the price for infrastructure or vertical costs are, but we're projecting the two-bedroom to be in that 250 range, and the three-bedroom to be under 300,000. I mean, on market today, the average townhome's 360 and above, and we're looking to be below that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you, sir. Scott, in your earlier testimony, you talked about developing your private street to ACHD standards. I only heard you reference curb and gutter. Are there going to be sidewalks?
Mayor.
He's the mayor.
Council. Yes, absolutely.
Both sides?
We, yes, we'll have on both sides. The only reason why I was referencing curb to curb is that 32-foot wide section from back of curb to back of curb, that is what creates within the ACHD criteria, so that you can have on-street parking. But yes, absolutely, we'll have sidewalks.
Mr. Mayor.
Both sides.
Thanks. And Scott, here's the reason why I ask, and you've been doing this a long time. This process is all about trust. We as the council trust that the applicant, when they come before us, are going to be honest to the best of their ability. Public's going to be as honest to us with the best of their ability. Sometimes there's shifting of perspectives you don't always see eye to eye. Part of it really frustrates me is when you had a simple mistake, not show up to a meeting. In your earlier testimony, you went at great lengths about having four meetings when one was required. You re-hit that point time and time again. I took notice of it, wrote it down as a note, because I was impressed. Then hear from a member of the public that you don't show up. You shouldn't have to hear that from them, we should be hearing it from you, and we shouldn't be making a joke about it, because this is people's time, time with their families, and their time's important, just like your time's important. So when somebody doesn't volunteer information like that to me, it makes me wonder, what else are they not volunteering? Which is why I got asked silly questions like you're going to put in sidewalks. It's not a good place to be as a council member. It's not a good place for our public to be. And I hope that we don't see that type of activity from you in the future.
Absolutely, and I do want to address, okay, so, A, number one, apologies. Apologies across the board. Number two, in the email of clarifications I sent today, I did divulge that in my opening testimony. I should have, so it's not a bait and switch, I'm taking full ownership.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, question. Scott.
Yes, sir.
Do you guys, do you guys currently own this property, or do you guys have an option on it?
We have an absolute option. The actual owner is here in the audience tonight, that we are under contract with. Naturally.
Sure, I get it.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned your traffic generating numbers. I've always been under the impression that it's about 9.8 per residential unit for a traffic count number, but the number you gave was less than that. Are townhomes having a different calculation from ACHD on your traffic count? Otherwise, it should be about 400 in the number you provided, from my knowledge.
That was simply based off of the generations that ACHD creates the calculations with, based upon whether it be a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom. Not a lot of expertise on my part. That was just me presenting things and looking to experts as far as what their calculation is.
So I guess maybe my question's for Justin, then. Justin, does ACHD differentiate in traffic count numbers based upon type of residential units?
Wonderful.
Just so we can be accurate in our numbers for the record.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Members of the Council, for the record, my name is Justin Lucas. I work for the Ada County Highway District. Business address is 3775 Adam Street, Garden City, Idaho. The short answer is yes. ACHD uses the Highway Capacity Manual, it's a trip generation manual, to determine what estimated amount of trips are going to be produced by different types of housing, different types of commercial uses, whatever that may be. All of that information is located in the ACHD staff report, the trip generation numbers which you have. And so, I don't have them off the top of my head, but if you're interested, they're in the staff report, and you can reference those. I don't know if it's exactly what the applicant said or not, I haven't, I haven't checked, but, but yes, we do have a national standards we use for those types of, those type of calculations.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any further questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Scott, my opinion hasn't changed since the first part of your testimony, that you don't got enough parking for this development to serve your residents. Have you had any conversations with you and your team about reducing the amount of units to accommodate for what I believe is more adequate parking?
Mayor, Councilman, yes. Our original design was roughly 48 units. We've since pared that down to make it more palatable, but also, we've built several of these projects in several different cities and counties throughout Idaho very successfully. And we do have a minimum standard for parking, otherwise, it will not be a sellable, palatable project, and we've been successful with these. I do, excuse me, I do want to reiterate that per City of Meridian code, in the Unified Development Code, the City of Meridian identifies for every single-family unit that there are two cars parked indoors, in a garage, and two on a driveway. So number one, we meet code, period. We meet code, the code you guys embody, you support. That's the rules of engagement. Number two, we do recognize that there are some on-street parking concerns, because these are tighter units. So that is where we came in with the additional 16 parking stalls down on the south to ensure that on Thanksgiving, or birthdays, or Super Bowl Sunday, something like that, people have adequate additional places to park, so as to ensure that we're not a burden, as I've heard that Cellway is on Kelly Creek. We're encapsulating all of our open space and our parking and our visitors.
Mr. Mayor, question for Sonya, then. What is our requirement for, is it per unit? How many spaces per unit, or how do, how do we figure that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Councilman Holblin, parking spaces are based on the number of bedrooms per unit.
Okay, so.
The analysis is in the staff report.
What I'm, what I'm reading, Mr. Mayor and Sonya, they talked about 218 spaces for 41 homes. This is Scott's, you know, information he provides, more than double code and helps existing issues. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, if we have, if they have 41 units, times four is 164, visitor parking of 16, plus on-street parking. It would appear they do exceed code requirements. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there further questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Without, sit here and tell Council has direction they'd like to go, or a motion?
I would like to, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I'd like to discuss a little bit. Sometimes things move too fast for me, and I don't get a chance to get my discussion in. You know, a couple of thoughts. I, you know, appreciate that the applicant is trying to go above and beyond on the open space here to meet some of the neighborhood concerns, and I appreciate that they're willing to widen the road. I think what I'm struggling with is, as a city, you know, we're supposed to provide adequate services to our residents, and at this point, you know, it's true that the McMillan Road is not in our control. It is a traffic nightmare, I don't think anyone can dispute that. The schools in this area are overcrowding. We've got this very frank letter from the West Ada District to us, recommending denial. We've got a planning and zoning commission, commission denial in front of us, and to me, you know, an optioned potential owner of this property came into this with an equity risk, assuming that we would upzone this property. And I have to say, looking at it, my own opinion is that I don't think that, that this neighborhood, especially this area of McMillan, can support any density beyond the R4. That, that's my honest opinion. So I'm leaning toward, you know, denying the application.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I'm always one that I, Councilman Holblin and I were talking a little bit about this during the break, try to find the yes. And for me, if a project contributes positively to our community, I'm more apt to support it. This has improved the quality of life for the people who live in that part of our community. Some ways, yes, and some ways, no. For the residents' benefit, it wasn't the applicant who brought the numbers about the students, that's the school district's numbers. He relies on their data. Their data shows that your elementary's under capacity, middle school's at capacity, everybody knows Rocky Mountain's over capacity, that'll change with Oaihe. Someone who's lived here my whole life, I remember going, on a bus, seven, as long as I can remember. What I look for goes to contribute negatively to the quality of life in terms of the parking challenge, disagree. We talked, would hope for something a little more of a level up, that really is hard for me, so, at least right now, not the full commission was there, their comments all ring true to me that this is just.
I'm done, each from their perspective, but, you know, for, here we have an infill project, and is approved two miles down the road, and say, oh, that's good, because they're going out, and there we are, and not in going out. Guarantee that, that someone buys that plant there, and one of them's really loud muffler, I'm going to, you need to, to, just, just to that situation. Look at the issue of, this is a development, that's not something you're going to get with another one, even, are they going to be using the Kelly Creek, this issue. My folks live in a place, patio home type of things, and then other uses came in, and other uses were approved, and now there's a rescue. It really is a difficult situation for them. Those, those are the types of things that, that really makes us a, each side, and it is a variety of price ranges. Finally, kind of stretched, and yeah, mom and dad helped them out a bit, and, and so, you don't want to have people, people starting families, all the way to people who are retired and wanting, does have to fit the area. It really doesn't. And I do like the fact that there is a, a owner.
Like Councilman Holblin, and those who have spoke before, the thing that strikes me, I shouldn't say very first, but one of the applications that we heard was a town in this area of our city, there's just, there's an oversaturation of higher-density product. I'm a big believer, and one of the advantages, I believe, that this proposed application provides is the price point. I love that price point that you proposed, it's something that we need. A diversity of housing is extremely important. And with that, I, I like what I see. But sometimes, in development, it's just, you know, sometimes it's not the right time, and sometimes, it's just not the right place. And sometimes, we just need to be patient, and I know that's not what you want to hear. It's not our purview in city council to make sure that things pencil, that's just not something that we, we, that is, you know, dictates, at least my decision, by, by any means, but decent, another thing that I, that I wrote down, I have some notes in front, sorry I'm bouncing back and forth, I know that your renderings, I get that, why you may not have provided more specific renderings, but in past applications, it's very common for us to receive very detailed renderings in this process, and the renderings that I see are quite simple, but that's where I stand right now.
So, is anyone interested in making a motion?
Mr. Mayor. Goddard, Goddard Creek Townhomes, H-2019-0068.
Opposed name? You guys have it? Is there discussion on the motion? Or, sorry, sorry, never mind. Councilman Burton.
I move that we deny item 6F, Goddard Creek Townhomes, H-2019-0068.
I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I'm one that always takes pause before denial. Appreciate the comments, my colleagues here tonight. I know in the past, the council has not been warm to substitute motions, and I'm not, you know, that's where I think we should head necessarily, but I'm, I'm curious if this council would be supportive of continuing this for a couple of weeks, to give the applicant the opportunity to hear from the feedback from the council, and make some changes, provide those architectural, if the council has an opinion or a thought on that.
Councilman Schrader.
To Councilman Burton's point, is really, we have some macro-level issues in this specific neighborhood, that I really think our structural renderings would change my decision, and I would hate to waste the applicant's time and money and effort on that. You know, the only thing that I, I probably would be open-minded about, getting a solution to the parking challenges off of Cellway, the Cellway complex, but it would also have to, to me, be closer to the R4 zoning designation. And so I'd be looking for reduced density to try to meet somewhere in the middle here, and that's a pretty big change to ask for.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
You know, at the end of the day, for me, and I, and those who know me, I'm definitely not short of an opinion, but I also believe in being honest and forthright, and I just, the, my concerns outweigh the things that I liked about this particular subdivision, and honestly, that's just what it boiled down for, to me, so, I don't want to waste anyone's time, I'm not in favor of this application, so my vote will be no.
Mr. Mayor, real, real quick, one of the things, it's been a while since I've served, and so I'm getting up to speed on things, but I, I think, for this process, in the maker of the motion, do we have to give reasons for this denial?
So, it is, it is a discretionary decision of the council, because this is development agreement. So, you can deny, because it's not in the best interest of the city. What I also heard, though, was you had concerns about the density and public safety. So, I've heard all those concerns, and if I, if I understand that, that's part of the reasons it's not in the best interest of the city, is the way I took that, then I think that's adequate.
Quick recall the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I have this as a motion to deny.
Right.
Okay, great. Borton?
Aye.
Cavanagh?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion is denied, or the motion carries to deny the project. All right, item 7A is ordinance number 201871. I'll ask the clerk to read this by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Meridian City Code, Section 1-6-4, creating designated positions in the mayor's office and establishing a hiring method, wage determination and separation benefit, adopting a savings clause, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Would anyone like this, like the entire thing read? Okay, seeing nothing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Just quick comment. Plead you for bringing this to the council. I think it's a forward-looking approach to staff, and will serve our city well both now and into the future. With that, I move that we approve ordinance number 20-1871, an ordinance amending...
I have a little discussion, please. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Schrader.
I think for the benefit of the public, what would be helpful, I had asked Mr. Nary some questions previously. Separation power is an ability to oversee appropriate compensation for these positions, and that we have...
Mr. Nary.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Members of the Council, Councilman Schrader. So, the question of separation of powers, this doesn't change anything in regards to that, regarding compensation. It still has to have budgeted money for that, so no compensation can be provided to an employee without it being in the, the authority and the powers that this ordinance does. This really is primarily written for administrative purposes and for some continuity of services and such in the mayor's office, and it doesn't impact the budgetary responsibilities of the council.
And if I could just add, these positions are still classified by HR within a range for those positions?
Mr. Mayor, I may discuss further with some commentary. That is what gave me comfort around approving the ordinance, is that we have the guardrails from legal in HR as well. Not any commentary on you, but...
If not, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden.
Aye.
Your meeting topics.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Appreciate hearing from SWAC today. It may be beneficial, I'll lead it up to you and staff and SWAC to see, but it may be beneficial in the future for council to get a presentation about what service offerings the waste haulers in the region provide, the jurisdictions they serve, what the cost is per their customers. As we are continuing to ask to take a look at waste, recycling, composting, to have a good understanding as to what the region pays, similar to the way finance prepares that around property taxes and impact fees, that type of an analysis I think would be beneficial, either as a workshop topic or an overall SWAC presentation in the future.
Okay, I don't think that'd be a problem. I know they do that annually and keep that up to date, so I notice information they already possess. If not, do I have any other motions?